Peter Angelo, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Just gonna wait one second for clerk to do our disclosures.
I'm listening.
You're good, okay. Disclosures of particular interest, do we have any? Counselor Wayne?
Yes, from our committee of the whole meeting prior to this, the portion of report CD 2011-05, the portion relating to the Falls View BIA because of my husband's employment.
Okay. Counselor Inori?
I had a conflict on the same issue as I worked contract work for that one employer.
Counselor Thompson?
To declare the same issue.
Okay, Counselor Thompson, we've got Counselor Morocco?
Worship, check number 344688, twice lost.
Okay. Counselor Carrio?
Same conflict with the Falls BIA and committed the whole.
Counselor Maves?
Check number 344735, I have an interest in that company.
Okay, do we have any other ones? And myself, I have two checks to myself, number 344330 and 344988. Okay, our first item, I would ask the city clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning by law to permit a proposed multi, multiple unit residential development at 4825 Pettit Avenue. Notice was given by first class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, March 18th, 2011, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chambers.
Okay. I'd like to ask our director of planning to help us with the reason for the proposed by law amendment.
Excuse me, thank you, Worship. Tonight's application involves four and a quarter hectares of land. The north side of Crop Street and the west side of Pettit Avenue, it's the former Chef Boyardee site, also known as the Pun Aggra site, and the property is currently occupied by a former industrial building. The property abuts the CN rail land on the north. Beyond that are some commercial industrial lands and the Zellers Plaza. To the east and south of this property are residential properties, single family and two-family homes. The corner of Dorchester Morrison, there's a large commercial complex with Zayers and a number of other commercial outlets providing for weekly and monthly type goods. Excuse me, the applicant is proposing to redevelop the site with 69 townhouse units and five apartment buildings for 387 units. There would be 456 dwelling units altogether proposed to the site. The townhouses are proposed as two to three stories in height. The first two apartment buildings behind the townhouses are four-story apartment buildings, and the three town, or apartment blocks next to the railway lands would be six-story apartment buildings. The applicant has requested an official plan amendment and a zoning by law change in order to facilitate this development. The, there are special policies and zoning approvals that would be needed in order to make this happen. When the applicant was first submitted the application in April of last year, he had proposed three, or 363 dwelling units on the property, and apartment buildings were limited to four stories in height. We had a neighborhood meeting in August of last year, 70 residents attended. They expressed their opposition to the development. They felt there was excessive number of dwelling units. They felt that the residential development was physically separated from the commercial development, that is, Zellers and Zayers to the north and west respectively. They also felt the development would create excessive traffic in their neighborhood. They also felt there was no need demonstrated for this amount of multiple-family housing. They also had questions about the impacts on servicing, whether parkland was adequate, and they had questions about the scale of development. The applicant did not wish to make any changes to the development, and so we brought the application forward that they had submitted. The, we had a look at a number of different areas. Certainly, we looked at the provincial policy statements and the provincial growth plan. The province is requiring that in built-up areas, more of our development is to be occurring through infill and intensification. And by 2015, we will be expected to provide 40 percent of our annual residential growth within the built boundaries which this property would be considered. The city undertook in 2007 a residential and employment land needs analysis. We determined that there, that study determined that there was enough medium-term land to project, to meet projected growth. The, as well, the study also identified that we could see a change in the mix of dwelling units and suggested that we try and strive for 60 percent singles and semi-detached dwellings in our neighborhoods and 40 percent of multis, that would be townhouses and apartments. The current Burdette neighborhood, which is what we classify this as, I should have outlined earlier on the map, it's basically between the Hydro Canal and the railway tracks, Dorchester and Drummond. So 71 percent of that neighborhood is singles and semi-detached houses now. 29 percent are multis, there's Dufferman Place Apartments, some townhouses near that. There are some apartment, apartment building and townhouses on the Drummond roadside as well. The, excuse me, the number of units that are proposed would nearly double the housing units in this neighborhood, and it would change the housing mix to 39 percent singles and semis and 61 percent multis. So quite different from the composition we have today and quite different from even what our own study determined would be our target for the, for any of our neighborhoods in the city. The city is required to prepare official plan policies to comply with the province's growth plan. That amendment is number 94. We brought it forward to council last summer. We were sent back to meet with the public, which we've done. We met, in fact, with the number of residents from this particular neighborhood. At the time that we brought out our draft policies of 90, in official plan amendment 94 last summer, we had identified this area along Crop and Pettit as densities at 25 to 50 units a hectare and building heights of two to three stories. The northerly portion of the lands would have a density of 50 to 100 units per hectare, building heights of four to six stories. When those were presented to the public last November, the residents again voiced strong opposition to that type of density, the heights, and they had concerns about the impact on the character and the compatibility with their neighborhood. So we revised our policies and, and reduced the densities that would be allowed. I should have mentioned that Dorchester and Morrison is recognized as an intensification node. And so we, but we reduced our densities to 50 units per hectare and less lands had direct access onto an arterial road. This property fronts onto Crop and Pettit, which are both local roads in our official plan. And so therefore, they would not have direct access to an arterial road. The closest arterial road would be Dorchester Road, so traveling down Crop to Dorchester. And at 50 units per hectare, this site could accommodate approximately 210 new dwelling units. The residents seemed to support, or the majority of residents when it came out to our follow-up meeting in February, supported this change from the earlier policies. The proponent is objecting to those. At this point, it's simply guidelines because we have not adopted them as policy, but they, they do serve as a springboard for some of our analysis on this application. The application is to change the designation in the official plan from industrial to residential. We did find that the industrial land use is a, an anomaly within a residential neighborhood. And so therefore, we did believe that residential land use would be more appropriate and more in keeping with the housing that we find in the Burdette neighborhood. It's also a goal to revitalize brownfield sites, which is a term for abandoned industrial properties. The applicant also requested special policies to go along with that change in land use. And this is where we begin to differ from the developer and his representatives. The applicant was seeking to establish single family, two-family, or townhouses along Crop and Pettit at a density of 61 units per hectare. Our standard density right now for street townhouses is 50 units per hectare, which would result in 56 street townhouses if we were to go with that standard. The, as well, the three acres, or three hectares rather, behind those frontages on Crop and Pettit would be developed with four to six-story high apartment buildings at 125 units per hectare. Typically, we allow those highest densities next to major commercial lands. Zellers, as I mentioned, and Zayers are major commercial lands. So they're certainly worthy of some intensification in order to support that commercial development, but we found that there was an undue concentration of one type of housing stock. And our official plan does contain policies. It says that we should be avoiding undue concentrations of one housing type. The, as well, the official plan recommends the gradation of heights. We did feel that the applicant had at least attempted that. He had two or three-story townhouse apartments stepping up to four stories, stepping up to six. In essence, the, the height of the buildings was higher, furthest away from the existing residential. But, excuse me, we still understand that the residents are opposed to the six-story height limits, or request. The, as I mentioned, 50 units per hectare across this site would result in 210 dwelling units. If the developer developed the frontage lands on Crop and Pettit with single detached dwellings and the rear lands as apartments, he could get 34 singles and 176 apartment units. And this would change the mix in that neighborhood. I mentioned earlier, it was 71 percent, 29 percent. So it would change to 56 percent single and semis and 44 percent multis. That's quite close to what our consultant had recommended in terms of 60 percent and 40 percent split. But if the site developed all with apartments and townhouses, the, at 210 units, it would still drop that mix to 52 percent singles and semis and 48 percent multis. Again, not meeting that target of that study that was adopted by council. The, as well, our official plan requires that, that new multiple-family development have reasonably direct access to arterial roads. I mentioned Dorchester is the closest arterial road. Therefore, require, require the applicant to submit a traffic study. They did that. But looking at their traffic numbers, in the morning, approximately 50 percent of the traffic leaving this site would exit along Crop Avenue, or Crop Street rather, to Dorchester Road. And the other 50 percent would largely travel down University Street, or Road Avenue rather, rather to Dawson Street and exit to Dorchester Road. So in essence, excuse me, the multifamily traffic would be traveling through an area of lesser density. The traffic report did examine what would happen if the area redeveloped with industrial uses. And their, their conclusions were that even with these residential traffic patterns, it would still be 20 to 25 percent less than what they anticipated the industrial traffic would be. The, because of the cost to demolish these buildings and remediate the building, the railway next to it, there is again some room for multiple-family development. We've made the recommendation of 50 units per hectare. The, because we're recommending a much lower density than the developer has proposed, we really can't assess whether or not zoning could, could be applied. And so we're basically recommending that, or concluding that we can't deal with the zoning at this point until we know whether or not the official plan would be changed to 50 units per hectare. So we're, we haven't actually examined that part, but it's the part that would again allow those 456 dwelling units on the site. So again, as in conclusion, the amendment would allow for 456 dwelling units, would permit one or more of the apartment buildings to also be developed as a retirement home. We can't, we recommend the amendments as requested because of the undue concentration would significantly alter the nature of the neighborhood. We did support the redesignation from industrial to residential, but we're recommending 50 units per hectare with the development on Crop Street and Pettit limited to single detached, semi-detached, or on-street townhouses. That would also require an environmental site assessment and a noise and vibration study be done before any residential development could occur. The, it's basically the same information. The recommendation therefore from staff is that council approve the official plan amendment in part, that being that we agree with the change from industrial to residential, but that the density be kept at 50 units per hectare, building height of six stories, requiring that the frontage lands be single semi or street townhouses, and the requirement for an environmental site assessment and a noise and vibration study, and that council defer any consideration of the zoning amendment until the applicant could revise his concept plan. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hrlavich. Members of the public are advised of failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting.
Questions, Mr. President.
Pardon me?
Questions?
Okay, yeah, sorry, okay, we've got Counselor Thompson, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thank you. First of all, I, I'm kind of amazed that this application is here in its form tonight. And I keep reading how the province is insisting on intensification in areas such as this. And yet, when you see the people who are concerned about this development, where are the province to respond to people who come when they think that their policies are inappropriate? And asking through you to Mr. Hrlavich, what, what, if we didn't intensify this area, what jeopardy are we in with respect to the province? Do they have any clout to, or they just wait until it comes for another development to see how that offsets the numbers?
The, they'll be looking at our policies in 94 and looking for some compliance.
94?
In official, in official plan amendment 94. So we'll be bringing those policies back to council in May. The, and so they'll be looking to see whether or not our policy recommendations comply with what they're looking at. They wouldn't be looking at this development specifically.
No, but what jeopardy are we in if we don't intensify the sites to their criteria? What, what, what can the province do to the municipality?
I'm not aware of anything.
Exactly. The other thing I am concerned about, when you have an application as controversial as this, and obviously, the developer is not interested in attempting to work with the municipality, the planning and the residents, and, and yet, in spite of that, we have recommendation one, which, that the council approve the official plan amendment application in part to redesignate the property from industrial to residential. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think anybody does. Although, given the option, I wouldn't mind four or five hundred jobs there, which we need badly. But here, but I'm, why would we be going on to say, develop the lands at 50 units per hectare and six-story, stories for apartments when obviously, the message that we're getting on council is, that's unacceptable. Why, why would we move that motion or, or, you know, if, if the, if the application? If the application is that contentious, why wouldn't the council just say, defer the application and let them come back to the system again to submit a formal application that's appropriate and is some kind of a compromise to what the community really wants? Is that not appropriate?
Yeah, that's certainly an option that council has.
Okay. The other thing, we don't have a copy of the, of the traffic study, but I can tell you, running door to door in 2003, nobody wanted to talk to me at that time because there wasn't a traffic light to get the traffic out of that area to come out onto Dorchester Road. There has been intensification. We're responsible for a $15 million overpass in that particular area. I think the congestion has subsided a little bit with the movement of Walmart out to the south end of the city. But the putting that much development in that area, in my opinion, the traffic is going to be a disaster. Is it not?
I can only reiterate what the traffic consultant said.
Yeah, but, you know, if I pay, if I pay a traffic consultant, he's going to do what I want him to do. So who, who assesses this?
Mr. Mayor, basically, it's assessed by the traffic division or the traffic department.
So you're responsible?
Yeah, so my staff would assess it. And basically, what happens is when they look at traffic volumes within an area, they choose the entire area and they say, is there enough outlets there to provide relief to that? And that's what they look at. Certainly, they wouldn't suggest more traffic going on to.
Has there been any decision on that? Are you suggesting that this development as proposed is acceptable for the traffic?
That's what, yes, staff, the staff have identified.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you please, if you please, I, can I have your attention? If you could, you've got a very supportive council, you know, without saying too much. So, too, if you can hold back on the clapping and the booing because we're just trying to get to the bottom of it, that's all. And then in the end, we'll make a vote, and I'm sure everybody will be pleased when we're all done, if you could. Thank you.
Actually, I was enjoying.
I know you were, I know you were. It's like a televangelist, yeah.
Anyway, I have my opinion about the traffic, I appreciate that. The, is the applicant the owner of the property? It's not options or anything?
Sorry?
Yeah, I'd have to let the developer speak to that or his agent. I don't know for sure.
Okay, thank you. I, I really, I really am concerned about the way this is handled. And there was a public meeting and months ago, and I'm sure everybody around this table were actually, in some cases, criticized for what was happening. We had no idea what was going on. And the closer this got to, I thought there would have been some respect for the concerns that are being suggested, but we'll have to deal with it otherwise, so it's fine, thank you.
Thank you. The solicitor, did you have a comment, Mr. Beeman, you were waving earlier?
I think it, I'll just.
Okay. Okay, we've got Counselor Peter Angelo, Inori, and Gates.
Thank you, Worship, and I have a couple of questions, I guess, to you, to Mr. Hrlavich as well. Mr. Hrlavich, just in talking about the city's growth plan conformity policies in OPA 94.
Speak up.
Just talking about, just talking about the city's growth plan conformity policies in OPA 94. I understand that we haven't passed OPA 94 yet. It's still in its draft. That's correct.
I'm not sure, sorry.
Okay, so then what do we revert back to as a policy?
Our current official plan policy.
Our current official plan. And what does our current official plan say as the density that is allowed for this area?
The official plan has general policies, and so basically, it allows various heights and densities as long as there's reasonable access to arterial roads. And as long as they're in close proximity to major commercial facilities. And Zellers and Zayers and Home Depot are all considered major commercial developments. So it's in close proximity, it's, they're rather flexible terms, so it's somewhat open to interpretation.
Okay. What are reasonable densities? Do we define those at all?
The, yeah, the densities vary from, you know, 30 units a hectare, 50 units a hectare, up to, our highest density is 125 units per hectare. 125 units per hectare are the lands set five corners. You're familiar with the apartment buildings in, in behind the bank in Nova Scotia. That would be a density of about 125. The senior's apartment building in behind where Camiso's is now. Those are densities approaching 125 units a hectare. Buckley Towers next to the downtown, that area was set aside again to have the highest densities to help those commercial areas redevelop.
Okay. And with the recommendation, the recommendation that's in our report is recommending that we approve somewhere around 210, 212 units on the property. And the developer is asking for 244 units on top of that. So more than double what the staff is recommending. That's correct?
Yes, Worship, that's correct.
Okay. And we're basing our recommendation on a policy that we haven't even passed yet, which is OPA 94, right?
Correct, yes. As I said, it's a guideline at this point.
It would seem to me then, Worship, that, I mean, the first thing that we need to do is we need to pass OPA 94, and we need to make sure that the residents are comfortable with what we pass there before we even try to implement those policies. It's obviously over-intensification and premature at this point.
I know it's hard, you're excited. Counselor Inori and then Gates, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was happy to see that staff did not come back with recommendation to approve. I know that when Counselor Wayne and I went door to door in that area, and I had attended that all-public meeting along with Counselor Gates, we were pretty clear that the residents didn't want it then. For anybody who doesn't live there, I do, and I will tell you, their traffic study numbers are a joke. Anybody that lives between Morrison and Dorchester can tell you, it's hell to get out of those roads at any given time through the day. So their numbers are a joke, first of all. Second of all, at that meeting, the developer was, the applicant was asked, are you going to develop this property, are you going to sell it to a developer? And if I'm not mistaken, and everybody's here, he said that they would not be developing it, they would be just selling it to a developer and hoping the developer followed the guideline that was sitting there or what was approved. That was the answer given at that meeting. I think the applicant was pretty clear that day that there was no possible way that the residents were going to come with anything less than amendments. I kind of, I, I, I'm dumbfounded to see them come back having changed nothing considering the opposition in the room that day. It's too big, it doesn't fit, it certainly doesn't fit an established residential area like that. While I see that they're asking us to defer the consideration, I'd rather see us just turn this application down permanently. And it'll be interesting to hear why they didn't actually listen to the staff who said, go back, make it smaller, and bring it back to something the residents can work with. Because we make, we pass applications here and we say we want the applicant to work with the resident. This applicant is absolutely proved, he didn't listen to one thing the local area residents told him. And I think that's all.
Thank you. We've got Counselor Gates.
Thanks very much, Mayor DiDati. I'd just like to say a couple of things about this and to Wayne Thompson's point around being, leaving it as industrial land. I really believe we should leave it like that. We shouldn't do anything to this application at all. We should be sending a strong message to this developer that when we have a public meeting, when we have just as many people that are here today, we're at that public meeting back in, I believe it was in November, and the developer didn't listen at all. He didn't care what our residents said. Well, I think developers should have to understand that if they're going to decide to build in this community, they better make sure it fits with the rest of the community. And what really got me going when I read this, and I did this last time we were here, but here's what it says. Following the neighborhood meeting, the application was invited. He was asked to do this, to consider changes, changes to the address residents concern. The applicant advised staff, they. The applicant advised staff that they do not wish to make any changes and asked the application to proceed to a public meeting before council. And I think we should send a clear message to this developer that he better listen to the citizens of Niagara Falls if he expects to get any compromise on this issue.[613.29][613.29](APPLAUSE)
Counselor Mace. See if you can get as many claps as Counselor Gates just got.[624.16][624.16](LAUGHTER)
I, I too am very concerned about any traffic there. Yeah, last summer, I was leaving Crop Street with a guest and wanted to go to Fort Erie. Couldn't make a left onto Dorchester, had to go all the way down to Thorlstone Road to get on the Queen Anne. I mean, that's what, that's what the people are living there now. So you can imagine the intensified traffic that would be there. It'd be horrendous. The other thing is too, across the road, down the way, is the medical building, and they have a berm behind it and a buffer. Is there any provision in this plan for a buffer or any sort of berm? I mean, are people going to be right against the railroad track by looks of this thing? Mr. Hurlovich, would you happen to know anything about that?
Excuse me, through your worship, there is a berm provided, the, we just received the CN comments today. They suggest that the berm may not be high enough, and it may require noise...
So that would eliminate a lot of the property there then, too, and make it a little smaller?
It would be slightly smaller, I suppose, because the higher the berm gets, the wider the sea landscape has to be. They, and I believe they require 2.4-meter-high berm.
But I can see, no matter what you did in here, even if you put half the units in there, you'd still have, well, 400 more cars in that area, and it's, you just can't handle it with the track and the way the corners are set up, so I can't see anything going through on this.
Did any other councillors want to test out the applause meter?[720.01][720.01](LAUGHTER) Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the OMB, the Ontario Municipal Board, dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 1724 of the Planning Act. Now, council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to proposed bylaw. Now, just before you speak, you step up, yes, just one second.
They'll only change their mind if they talk to one.
Yeah. What we're going to ask you to do is, we're going to ask that, we don't have any repetition. We understand the issue very clearly, and we've got the emails and the calls. So I've got someone in the front row first, and all we'd ask is that you keep your comments very brief and avoid repetition. And if you do have questions for the developer and whatnot, we will track those questions, and then we'll ask the developer when he's or she is able to approach the podium. So, sir, in the front row, we will start with you first, if you'd like to step up.
I'll first.
Okay, you just come up to the mic, please, and state your name and your address, please.
Is that on, Mr. Chair?
Pardon me?
Is it in my phone?
Yes, that's the microphone, yep.
It's on.
Is it on? It should already be on.
It's on.
Is the red light on?
Maybe he doesn't understand my accent. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, for this opportunity to talk to you. I was at that meeting, the last meeting.
And your name, sir?
My name is Patrick Crowe, I live on Carolyn Avenue. The big thing that really hasn't come up tonight, and I think there should be a hold to put on any development in that area, do we have something to do with trains? That is a major problem in the area of trains, and they're getting longer, and I realize that they have to be there, because either they go to Kingston or down to Windsor, and that's unreasonable. But we have to do something about these trains, because, and there's other developments slated for that area, that I saw, I asked that everything be deferred to some decisions is made on what we're going to do in the traffic there. Most of my points have been covered tonight, but I would want to just put back to a comment that was made by a councillor that said we were shocked at that meeting when the developer said, I'm going to do this and get my big money for this concept and walk away to the bank, and I don't care what happens after that. These people, if they're going to come in our city and develop, they should be held responsible for the whole thing. The last thing, Mr., is we have lost most of our industry in the peninsula, and if you go around and out of the peninsula, there's a lot of people looking, retirees. This is what we're depending on. Most of them are building big, high-rise buildings. Let's be smart in Niagara, it's a wonderful place to live, I've lived here for 43 years. Keep it that way. Make this the place of choice for retirees to come to because they can live in reasonable homes, a little garden to sit in, and this is what they want. Never mind just crunching people in like animals into small, let us be different than the rest of the place, and I think it'll pay off because we'll be the place of choice for retirees all over the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.[935.88][935.88](APPLAUSE) Yes, sir, if you want to come, and then ma'am, we'll get you next.
My name's Gary Fisher, I live next door to that gentleman on Carolyn Avenue.
Carolyn.
Yeah.[947.13][947.13](LAUGHTER) I want to thank council for really working on this one. This is a pain, this is, this is, I am so upset, right now, I'm having troubles trying to get things together. But two years ago, Alderman Thompson, we were downstairs for a meeting with that bridge. And the reason we, what we went there is because of the volume of traffic. 456 more cars. And they say they have an exit scheme for Crop. Well, Bart didn't get out, and there was no 456 more cars on that street. He had to go all the way down to Thorlstone Road. I live on Carolyn, I tried to get out on Carolyn over to La Marsh. It's impossible. And I'd like to ask the fire chief something. If there's a train and my house is on fire, you're never going to get in La Marsh if the cars are backed up on Morrison Street, if the cars are backed up on La Marsh, because you can't turn your truck in there. You have to go all the way around to Dorchester Road, providing the cars aren't all backed up from the, from the train, come in Dawson, providing nobody's gone through the stop sign, the light there, and then come down to my house on Carolyn Avenue. By that time, my house is gone. An emergency vehicle, other than a police car, if there's, there's traffic on La Marsh, can't get in. A police car will get in, an ambulance won't get in. They have to go around. My second, the next thing I have to say to you is this. Behind me on Drummond is an area that was developed a few years ago by Mr. Branscombe and then sold to somebody else. And now it's probably one of your nicest areas in the city for the police, the fire, and the ambulance. It's right behind me. I've had a bullet through my pool, I've had four pit bulls almost come through into my yard, which I came to city council to talk to you about. I've had arguments with people, one came over the fence after me. I've had police dogs through our backyard and SWAT team with automatic weapons in our home going through our backyard. If you're going to develop a big area down at that end of the street, and I ask that gentleman, this is going to end up in a slump, because you'll get one or two people that are coming to that place that are, whether they're law-abiding or not, and you'll find good citizens moving out because they don't want to be part of it. And then what do you have when they leave? You have more of the same moving in, which means we're going to have a lot of trouble at that end of the street, we're going to have a ghetto. And I don't want another one. I've got enough behind me now. So if you please turn this application down, and as Mr. Gates has put it, let's leave it as an industrial area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.[1137.33][1137.33](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Jody Campbell. I have three quick things.
And you live?
I live on Bracken Street.
Bracken?
And we have for the last six years. First of all, I want to, and I think I speak for everybody according to the applause meter here, that it's nice to feel that some of the councillors are actually listening to what the residents are saying, and we are hearing you say what we have been saying from the beginning. So I know myself, I do appreciate that, and I'm sure many of us do here. The second thing is, one of the members of the neighborhood has gone quickly to go and grab. We had a petition go through the neighborhood that I believe has over 300 signatures on it opposing what's going on here. So even though we are somewhat very well represented tonight, there are signatures coming that even give more power to this. I'm not sure what part of the process that we're allowed to present that, but they have gone to grab it just to make sure that it could be presented tonight. One of my concerns that I haven't really heard brought up very much is that at the last meeting, the first public meeting that was there, an environmental assessment issue had come up, and we were told at the time, I specifically was told at the time, that the finalization of that or the second part of the assessment, I'm not sure what the wording they used, where I can't remember, but there was another part of the assessment that was still to be done. And I have not, neither has anyone that I've spoken to heard what the result of that was. Regardless of what does end up going on there, whether it ends up being residential, which most of us are hoping it's not, but regardless of what goes in there, there is an environmental concern there because it has always been industrial. So I'd like to know if there's been any address to that, and state that that is a grave concern. From somebody myself who has had health problems in the past, I would not want anybody living on that property, even close to it, who had a potential health problem down the road. That's it. If you could answer my question, that'd be great.
We will get your answers.[1266.41][1266.41](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and city staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name's Mark Sturzinger, I live north side of Pettit there, about two doors, two lots from these properties. So I live, and I've lived there since 1988. In 1989, there's a parcel of property at the northwest, northeast corner, see the property that's landlocked there, Pettit Avenue? You can point it, somebody could point it possibly, on the east side, the east side, behind the medical building, that parcel there? It's approximately two-acre property. In 1989, we residents initiated an OMB hearing concerning that two-hectare parcel of property, which is at the northeast corner of Morrison and Pettit. This parcel of land is bounded by the sea end of the south and has no direct access to it, arterial or collector road. The OMB decision limited this property to 69 units and a maximum of three-story high buildings. You can refer to City Report PD 91163. The approved density would have put at approximately 35 units per hectare. This property has only one access through a residential and school zone, and it's still vacant today, it's never been developed in 20 years. So that was a sort of a precedent, as far as I'm concerned, of the density in that area, three-story, 35 units per hectare. I'm pleased to see the city staff rejected the initial proposal of the developer because it's not even close to 35 or 50 units per hectare. In 2004, there was a study done by Delcan concerning Dorchester and Morrison Street and traffic situations, and by that time, the region had transferred the roads from the regional to city back in 2000, I believe. Dorchester and Portage became city. The Delcan study recommended that the level crossings remain the same, but that the roads be widened, so Morrison Street be widened from Dorchester to Drummond, and Dorchester from Lundys Lane all the way to Thorlstone Road, widened to four lanes and with left-hand turning lanes. I guess my question is, and what the consultant said at that time, who's a reputable consultant? I'm just wondering why we haven't widened Morrison Street all the way to Drummond, and why we haven't widened Dorchester all the way to Thorlstone Road? Thorlstone, what is a major link to the QBW? That would solve a lot of traffic problems in that area. Installing a traffic light where the medical building is would help, too. Whether there's trains or no trains, there's still traffic condition, as far as I'm concerned. I've seen it when CN closed Dorchester Road. When they closed Dorchester Road, Morrison Street was wide open, but there was a nightmare. So that would happen every time there's a train, even if you put an overpass on Morrison Street. So, I mean, that's another story. So I was against the overpass when it was permit, when it was proposed next to our housing. But as far as I'm concerned, low-density residential in that area, I wouldn't have a necessarily problem with it, but the problem, the problem is, traffic, no matter what you put in there, traffic's going to be a nightmare. How long has that building been vacant? 10 years? No?
I don't think quite that long.
Five years? But anyways, nobody's mentioned about the school crossing, the pedestrian crossing at Pettit and Morrison. That's a school crossing there which probably takes, I don't know, 20, 40 kids. If you put 400 units in there, how many kids are going to go across that level crossing? And is that level crossing up to today's standards? You ask a Transport Canada official, he's going to probably say no. I mean, I dealt with Transport Canada putting new level crossings, like pedestrian crossings through roads. It's, you have to put a lot of stuff in today to get up to standards. Traffic arms, maze barriers, stuff like that. I don't think that crossing can take any more people. And unless you put a pedestrian overpass, which is a lot cheaper than building a car overpass. But anyways, I'm opposed to the development. And unless it's a lot less dense or it stays res, or commercial, industrial, then it's probably better for that area, so. Thank you.
And we have your email here as well, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.[1537.83][1537.83](APPLAUSE) We need you on the microphone, sir, we can't hear you.
Actually, the way they're all started here, they can't hear anyway, I want them to hear me. I live in University Avenue, and nobody mentions it.
What's your name, sir? What's your, what's your name, sir?
John McClellan.
Okay.
I live in 543 University Avenue. On the drawings, you don't even mention University Avenue, and it's the main exit coming out of this. We've talked about it. We've gone right down to University, when the train is blocking, I'm leaving out my driveway. Right now, it's quite busy, but nobody seems to mention University. That's where all the, all the people coming out, they're down, along watching people on the Dorchester. But it's, I mean, whoever's thinking of the traffic problems, even, I don't know, if we get the fire, people really tells how the fire engine is going to get in there. I've never had to see.
Thank you very much, sir.[1596.13][1596.13](APPLAUSE) Now, are there any new concerns that have not yet been addressed? Is there any other concerns that have not yet been addressed before we ask the developer to come up? Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up? If you'd, if you'd come to the mic. It's for those at home that are watching at home that couldn't make it out today, so they can hear the comments.
Scott Stevens, I live on Southgate.
Okay.
I would, my only concern is, I'm new to the neighborhood, and I'm thoroughly disgusted with the park that's there now. I think it's called Carolyn Park, there's no, there's no sign. You're going to add 456 units or 200 units? There's no provisions for, to upgrade the park? Or is there a park? That's my concern.
Okay. We can, actually, we can ask Mr. Hurlovich, currently, right now, in the proposed plan, is there any upgrades to the park or?
Not more proposed.
No more proposed?
No.
Okay. It's a pleasure to answer, thank you. Okay, we had someone in the front row, sir, if you could approach the mic.
My name's Alan Calder, I live on Pettit Avenue. I've lived there 20 years. I've been happy there, it's quiet, peaceful. There's been one concern that nobody's really voiced, the kind of people you could get in this development. It was seen like, my friend there was talking about earlier on, that the townhouses. I went down there today, just out of curiosity, and I was shocked that such a place was allowed to exist in Niagara Falls. It wants bulldozing, and somebody's proposing to put a new one near us. What about the high crane, in all probability, we will get? Have I got to stand at night watching my car isn't going to be vandalized, my property? And feral children running up and down the street? I mean, people have got a right to live, but you see, I'm getting old now, and I want to live in peace my last few years. And as I say, nobody's thought of the crime that this kind of development does bring. I've seen it in other areas, I've lived in these areas, I've lived with people like that. You've got good people, but you get a lot of bad people. And this particular kind of development seems to attract them, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Your worship, members of the council. My name is Thompson, and I live on Bracken Street, another Scots accent. My question is, is the council going to vote on this application or is it going to vote on the recommendation?
Well, it's going to, it'll have the choice, sir. Either we're going to address the recommendation or the application.
Okay, if you address the recommendation, could I ask the planning department? I mean, I'm old-fashioned, and I went to school, and I was acres, and this hectare has got me, but as far as I can see, it's 20 units per acre, which in my counting is about three times...
Can you speak into the mic, yeah?
I'm sorry. It's about three times the... It's about three times the present density. Am I correct in that, saying that?
I don't have the, exactly worked out, but I would say you're likely right.
Well, that was my point, it's three times what we have at the moment. And it's, if you're going to put in three times that population, then it's, the homes and the yards are not going to be reconcilable with what we have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, if we've got the, oh, yep, ma'am? Would you like to step up? And again, if we just ask that you, if it's been said that we don't repeat it so we can move forward with the developer, we're anxious to get them up here too.
I'm Shirley Ead, I live on the corner of Bridette and Pettit.
Okay, and your name is?
Shirley Ead.
Ead, okay, thank you.
On a personal note, my husband and I live right next door to the factory. And I know everyone that's going to be affected, but personally, the exit is right there. The traffic volume beside our house, the noise, the dirt, the privacy laws, the six-story buildings, I will no longer have sun in my yard. I have a pool I won't be able to enjoy. And, and the children crossing is a big issue now. Graffiti on my fence. It's a personal issue.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Is there anyone else that has anything other, that hasn't already been stated? Okay, seeing none. Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, staff, and all the residents here this evening. You are certainly out in force. My name is Chris Miller. I'm a planning consultant for Upper Canada Consultants. I'm the representative for the applicant on this, this file. I'm joined here this evening by the traffic consultant from Delcan, who's here to answer any questions after the presentation that we make. So what I think I'd like to do is run through my PowerPoint presentation. And of course, if some of the questions aren't addressed in there, then I'm certainly going to get my share. So, as you see on the screen, that's the, the location, from Pettit and Crop, in the northwest direction. The, the factory itself, about 175,000 square feet. And I think there was a question earlier about its vacancy. I believe it's been vacant now for five or six years. So, just here, go here. There was also, Mr. Thompson, I believe, was discussing policy. There is certainly a lot of policy that goes along with this, and certainly emanating from the top down. We start with the provincial policy statement in the upper left. That's the guiding document for the province. And from that, provincial plans can be further defined. And that has brought us, brought forward the Places to Grow Plan from 2006. And from that, the region of Niagara have taken those policies, have, have put them into their regional policy plan amendment. And below, you'll see the arrow heading down to the adopted. They currently, of course, have the adopted Regional Amendment to 2009, which is, is only adopted, it has not been approved yet. The, one on the upper right corner, of course, is the current Niagara Falls official plan. And I know that Mr. Counselor Pedriangelo had mentioned that. And that, of course, is the policy that's in force and at play. This application has been filed under. And down the bottom right is the Growth Management of Niagara Falls. So that is the policy and planning framework that we're dealing with in, in the context of the application and today. And I'd like to say that the application, we feel conforms to that. Urban Metrics Study that was also mentioned, 2007. It was a, was a study that was done to look at the industrial and the residential land needs over the long term. It was adopted by this council and carried a number of recommendations. One was that there would be a need to convert a large amount of built area, built-up area, employment lands, to meet with the residential projections so that we didn't have to expand our urban boundaries further. And that, of course, is in line with all the provincial policy, tighten up. Let's use what's in the ground first. Let's make sure that we're using it efficiently so that we're not putting pipes in the ground for acres and miles that our kids and our grandkids are going to have to spend the money on the capital replacement on. That is, you know, the thrust of, of the policies. Here we have, that was talked about earlier, was the draft OPA 94 from November. You can see that on the top slide, that the, the height strategy mapping indicated a zero-to-four-story band around in the frontages of Crop and Pettit, and a four-to-six-story apartment, or a four-to-six-story height in the lighter pink area, and then a four-to-10-story height in the lower left, the yellow area. That was very much in line with what we have on the table and have on the table. Following the public open house that was conducted, and the further, the open house of the OPA 94, February 2011, this is what the height strategy mapping looks at the bottom left. It's, it's certainly been modified from what we certainly support. And there was mentioned that, that the developer is not in favor of what's happening there, and has in fact submitted a letter to the city expressing their concern. So there is an ongoing matter for the developer and the city. Here, of course, we have Duffren Place. It's an existing eight-story at the corner of Dawson. And Dorchester is obviously a familiar building to everybody. And these next three slides, I'm going to run through them in sort of a quick repetition. Now, I'll just explain what I've done, is I've taken this and I've photo edited it. Okay, so we've got the eight stories, that's existing. The next slide you'll see is a six-story version of this and a four-story version of this. So I'm going to run through them quickly here, and you'll just see how it drops down. Okay, so just to go back, there's six, there's eight, six, four. Okay, so what I'm trying to demonstrate here is, that's what we would be proposing next to the rail line. That would be in between the rail line and the town housing, and the singles or semis that are along Crop and Pettit. Not the eight, that, and that. Okay? So here they are, and all three just on the same slide. But I'm using that building as, as a demonstration because everybody here in this room is certainly familiar with that building and what the height and massing means, and what it would mean on that location, on that site. Of course, here's the site plan. You know, it's, it's been expressed that there haven't been very many modifications, and in fact, there hasn't. We did meet with the city on a number of occasions through this process. Our original plans had the, the entranceway at the extreme westerly end. The suggestion to align it with University Avenue was a suggestion of the city's. We've done that. So there's that, there was also meetings that were conducted about the, the drafts that were submitted, with the applications of the official plan and the zoning bylaw amendments. We were looking for, we had put in those, those draft policies. We were looking for six-story permissions across the board. In discussions with the city, we've dropped them down to four at those back ones, and we have six still along the, the rail line. So as was spoken to by my colleague, Mr. Hrlavich, the gradation of height is here in this plan, and it is, in our opinion, respecting the neighborhood. You're going to have single, you're going to have, you're going to have single the, the, the ground-based units on those frontages, so. I'm going back to the policies, and I'm just going to run through these quickly because that's what we're dealing with. I mean, we're dealing with planning from the top down, and that's what everybody's affected by, so. And it's, and this is where it hits the ground. And Mr. Thompson is right, where's the province to come here tonight and talk to us? In fact, where's the region to come here and support this? So the policy's there. On the provincial policy statement, 1131, regeneration shall be promoted. 143, promotion of densities of new housing which efficiently use land, resources, infrastructure, public services, facilities, and support alternate modes of transportation. Establish development standards for residential intensification development of new residential development which minimize the cost of housing and facilitate compact form. This is what we're, this is what we're proposing. The existing use of infrastructure and public service facilities should be optimized wherever feasible. Now, that's, that's the top-level documents here, and, well, I'm just going to skip through here to go to the next one. Here we are at the next level down of that. That's the provincial plan, Places to Grow. Every municipality's had to wrestle with this in their official plans to find where they were going to intensify. This is mandated, this is legislated. These were also handed down to the region. And the region was handing them down to Niagara Falls. Niagara Falls, here are your population projections. Go make it work. Show us where you're going to intensify. So the region, I'm just going to go through these because I think that the point has been made. So here we are at the local level, your current plan. This is what we're dealing with, under the application. Should be coordinated, all residential development should be coordinated with the development, the patterns of the surrounding developments having regard to such matters as the housing mix, densities, the road system, and phasing of development. Undue concentrations of any particular type, and this is what Mr. Hrlavich was referring to, shall be avoided. A variety of low, medium, and high-density housing shall be promoted. A gradation of building heights and densities will be encouraged. We've done that. Frontage on the street having reasonably direct, reasonably direct access to the collector or major collector roadways. And this is obviously one of the ones that is, is a contentious matter. 174, apartments four to six stories can, in height, can be developed up to a maximum of 100 units per hectare. Such development being located at the periphery of our neighborhood, which we are. Convenient access to the arterial road system. It's 120 meters away, if that, that's convenient. And be in close proximity to the minor commercial centers and districts. We are, we border them. So that policy is, is in play, is, is a policy that's in force today. Of course, the bus routes, the transit supportive densities, the more people you put in close proximity to those, the more ridership you're going to get. Certainly, we feel that the density of this nature will certainly support that. Suitability to site or area for the proposed use, especially in relation to alternate sites or areas in the city, possible areas for intensification or redevelopment. The OPA 94 is, is doing the right thing. It's doing what it's supposed to do. It's identifying the intensification areas. You're, you're identifying four in your municipality. Morrison Dorchester being one of them. Okay, so I don't want to lose track of that, that this area has been identified for intensification. I'm going to come back to it. The financial implications of the proposed development. We'll certainly get a tax lift as a residential development over the vacant industrial. So the applicant's comments here, there's common ground, it does exist. The change to residential is supported by the area residents, or what I believe has been support by the area residents. The ones that came out to the open house that we ran back in February, oh, '10, everyone was in favor of converting it to residential. City staff supported, as, as you read in their staff report, regional staff would support that as well. And it's further supported by the Urban Metrics, the study that was done and adopted by this council, 2007. Clarification of the roles of developer and builder. Counselor Iainoni was, was indicating what her, she had heard at that meeting. I'd just like to clarify further that what the, you heard, counsel, was that Paletta International are the developer. They are not the builder. Paletta International will be the developer on this project, who will then go out to secure builders. So the developer, their role in this is to sign the agreements, put the pipes in the ground, make sure all those kinds of things are accounted for, and the securities are collected so that this municipality is assured that that work will get done. The developer goes out and finds the builders, who would like to build what is being approved. And the developer goes through the motions, being here tonight. We go through this process to, to gain the approval so that we can go out to the market with something. It's much easier to go to market with something that's approved than not approved. So there's a, there's some assurance there. And Paletta are acting as the developer and not the builder. So I know that the residents at that meeting were saying, what's coming in here? What's coming in here? Today, here tonight, I cannot still tell you what's going to be in there. What I, what we're hearing, what these applications are about are density and zoning matters. They're not about what building is going to be there, what it's going to look like, who's going to occupy it. We do prefer ownership, we do prefer condominium tenure. That would be our objectives. But for me to categorically state tonight that what's going to happen there, I can't do that. We're the developer in a planning process. We're at the beginning of that process, converting lands. We're not at the building application stage, the permit stage, none of that. So I would really hope that there's an understanding of both the, the public, counsel, that we are taking it step by step, and this is the first step. Okay? The reactions of the OPA 94, certainly the, the change in policy that I was showing you earlier with the gradation of height mapping, that was certainly something that seemed to be reactive to the resident's concern. That's okay, council has the, the final call and the approval. Staff have reacted by making that change and introducing new policies into that November draft. We don't agree with those policies, and, you know, that, that's a separate process that's going to be running very shortly, and we'll see how that plays out. We see that as being a very localized view, as a reaction to this, to this group here that's here this evening, the residents. That's fine, they're, they're here to voice, voice their concerns, and that's, that's what this process is about. And, but what I want you to take into account too is also the commercial people, the commercial landowners, the business owners in that commercial node, who would love to have new customers, new base, right there, right close to them. You know, that's often the case where, when there's something that's acceptable to a community, they don't come out and voice their approval in, in these matters. It's typically the people who have issues who are here before the councils at the public meetings, and usually the developer, or something like that, myself, here to field that. But really, please do not have, or turn your back on what that could do for that commercial area. That's something that I would really hope that this council has regard to, is revitalizing that area. The 60/40, 60/40 mix that, that my colleague, Mr. Hrlavich, was referring to is actually a city-wide objective. That, taking that view as a city-wide objective, you're looking for that in across the city. When you're looking at intensification nodes, you should be expecting that there's an invert of the type and mix. Otherwise, if you've got 60/40 everywhere, you're not going to identify where those nodes are. So what I'm conveying here is that we know that there's four nodes planned in the city, and that we should expect to see the density in those areas going up. And accordingly, the 60/40 city-wide average should be somewhat inverted to recognize that, that type of gradation. I mentioned before the gradation of height is achieved, there's no, there's no real loss in privacy. Here we have a development that doesn't back on to residential. So, you know, the privacy matter is, as far as we're concerned, not there. We, we do have the gradation of heights. I mean, this, this seems to me to be a perfect site for, for this type of thing, to get the numbers, to support that node, and have the least impact on the existing residents.
No, we, we can't, this is, we'll have an opportunity after.
The traffic has been studied and accepted by city staff. Now, I know that that's been contentious, but here we have the traffic, traffic study having been supplied. Further work was requested, it was supplied. And, and the consultant is here to answer questions about that, but as you've heard from, from city staff, that, that, that report complies. All infrastructure exists, and there's no concerns have been identified for the development as proposed. So we have pipes in the ground, we have roads, we have sewers, we have water. Everything is in the ground there that can support the development as we proposed. And really, that's where we're coming from. Why would you not be seeking what it can support to support that node? So really, that's, that's why, you know, there's a view that we're, we're not budging. We think that that's what is appropriate for the area. The circulation comments that came back, there was no objections. So, so I would ask that the council consider that, that here we had circulation on application for, for the number of units that made its way around through the agencies and departments, and, and there has been no objection to, to what's there. So that's, that's something for this council to please consider. So the applicant's request is that council have regard to the intensification objectives of the city, the node designations, the four that are identified in the city. The study work that was requested, which included the noise and vibration study. I would certainly appreciate the comments of CN from Alex later this evening. The Phase 1, which one of the residents had spoken to, and the environmental assessment, there was an environmental Phase 1 prepared and submitted. It requested that there be further study because of the area inside the factory. There are, I guess, hydraulic jacks or pits inside there that they wanted tested, and that there was potential for contamination along the rail line. That prompted a, a, an additional study work, Phase 2, that was completed and has been submitted to the Ministry of Environment and is being reviewed so that we are in a position to get the record of site condition clearing this site for residential development. So there was follow-up on that Phase 1. A Phase 2 was completed and submitted to the Ministry of Environment. The fact that the existing infrastructure is already in place. The fact that the existing infrastructure is already in place, I mean, it's there. It's got the support to handle the flows, the water, the road network there, it's there. And that's what we mean by intensive, or efficient use of land and infrastructure. The lift in tax revenue, proximity and support this development a lot for the business owners of the node, and that's, please have regard for that. The contributing density to support the increased transit ridership, the mix of the permitted uses and tenure, we are in the draft OP and zoning bylaw in some of our discussions with the city staff. We were encouraged to broaden that. We did broaden out the uses, the permitted uses, to include the single detached along the frontage of Pettit and Crop, but also the retirement home use in that area as well. So we've included those, so there is a broad mix of permitted uses. And of course, the tenure, you know, we would like to have the ownership that I've mentioned. Proximity to the, and access to major roads, both vehicle and pedestrian, certainly the Crop Street is actually to Dorchester, Kiefer to Dorchester, Dawson to Dorchester, University Avenue connecting those. There's the eastern connections out through La Marche. There are trains, obviously, there are trains. There was issues about cut-through traffic. My comment on cut-through traffic is it existed 20 years ago, and it's going to exist 20 years from now. What we're proposing in the area is not cut-through, it's destination and its origin. People live there, they go there and they leave from there. So it's not cut-through traffic. The developer has a desire to see this through, okay? He's a very well-heeled developer, very experienced, and would like to make this project work. It is alignment with all levels of the government policy, as I indicated earlier. So what I'm here tonight to ask on behalf of my client is that the council support our proposal as proposed, and I believe you were provided with a handout this evening, which is the draft OPA and the draft zoning bylaw amendment that were filed most recently with the city, I think back in early March, and that reflects the development as it is. So I believe that that was the extent of my slide presentation. I think, I think I'll just open it up to questions, and as I mentioned, I have Nick Palumbo here from Delcan, if there are questions related to traffic.
Okay, that sounds good. Mr. Miller, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And the one question that was asked earlier of our group here is regarding your environmental, and you said that you've done a Phase Two, and that is at the Ministry of the Environment right now?
That's, yes.
And so you're awaiting their...
Waiting their review, and we anticipate a record of site condition. The study work did not conclude the contaminants on the property, so that's what that study contains. Any contamination is actually on railway lands, and, you know, it's not part of this. So that's, that was the conclusion of the study, so that is at the Ministry.
Okay, thank you. Now, we've got Councilor Ianone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for the planning lesson, but we take our advice from our staff. I know it's a tough crowd here, you knew you were getting up to a tough crowd, so I'll try not to beat you up too bad. I think the interesting thing is, you talk about your meeting with the residents. I'd have thought you might have implemented something of change that the residents asked you. As I read this and the phone calls I got, I'm amazed that you came back with this. I have to be truthfully honest with you. From the comments you got from that meeting, I don't believe you've met the planning standpoint that you're talking about. We haven't passed OPA 94. Our staff says it's an overdue concentration of units. I believe it's too big. Mr. Palumbo from Delcan can tell us anything, but when you live over there, we know what the numbers are. It's too big, and, Mr. Mayor, when you close the public meeting, I would happy to make a motion to turn down this application.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Wang.
And I'll be happy to second it. The slide about 1.74 in our current official plan refers to convenient access to arterial road systems being one of the requirements for such dense development, as is being proposed. I think all of us around this table and all of the residents here realize that the functioning of the arterial road systems in that area is severely compromised by the trains that go through there. We've heard about it tonight, we were all aware of it before tonight, and the way those arterial roads and the roads leading onto them frequently get backed up by the trains, there is no way that convenient access can be provided. The one slide that really caught my attention was toward the beginning, and I don't know if we can get back there, I'm hoping we can. It was sort of a split screen, on the top was November 2010 policies, and down below was February...
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, and those then are the ones, the top screen is what's being relied on as...
That was the draft policy and mapping that went along with your draft OPA at the time, back in November? And what our plan, generally, our plan subscribed to that?
Okay, stop right there. It was draft.
That's correct.
It was draft.
Yes.
And what happened was, last year, I asked that the staff take a little road show out into the community and actually present to the public the official plan amendments that were being proposed, and ask for their input. And this was something that had never been done before, and I know the staff were really happy about having to do it, but they did. And so we actually got public input into the changes being made to our official plan. And as a result of this public input, which I think is absolutely great, because this to me is a very important part of the democratic process, we have some change. And the changes, what you see on the bottom screen, February 2011, I think are a lot more sensible than what the staff alone came up with on the top screen. And there is nobody in this world who's ever going to convince me that what's on the top screen is a better draft policy than what's below, after the public has had a chance, not just in this area, but in all kinds of other areas throughout the city, to take a look at the proposals and have their input, and the drafts were tweaked in response to that public input, and we came up with a far better product, not just here, but elsewhere as well.
Mr. Miller, there was a question earlier too regarding ownership. Is it Paletta that owns the property?
Yes, Paletta owns the property.
Okay. Are there, yeah, Councilor Gates.
Yeah, Jim. I mean, married you daddy? Just to the presenter, what's always interested me, when you come to these type of things and you see the residents and you see the city, the developer really doesn't care about the city, they don't really care about the area, they don't care about the residents. They're trying to make as much money as they can on this property, and that's kind of sad when we're trying to build our community, even with the policies in our place. But in your presentation, you said that there has been some compromise, that the residents were in favor of the change to move it from industry to residential. I talked to a number of residents today, I called them personally, and there wasn't one resident that I'm aware of that is in support of changing that. So I don't know where you got that from the public meeting that I also attended, but the residents certainly were not in favor of doing that, and I saw it on your presentation. So I'm not going to say it was a lie or anything like that, but I think it's misleading from the residents that I talked to, for sure.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Back prior to the election, in February of 2010, there was an open house ran by the developer at the property. The circulation was gathered in the same respect as the public circulation, the notices echo out. The city provided us with...
400 meters from the area.
Actually, 400 feet.
Okay, folks, please, please, we're going to give them the opportunity to speak.
So we took advantage of the city's offer to supply the same notice circulation, and we circulated to the residents to come to that open house and provide comments on what their opinion was on taking that land from industrial to residential. I have in my planning report, and it's part of the submission that was made with the application, the sign-in sheets, and the information that was displayed at that meeting. So there was a meeting, it's not a myth, it happened. There was probably a dozen.
Okay, folks, right now, we're past the, we're at the stage where council gets the last chance to ask questions, then we're going to close the meeting, and then we're going to call for a vote. So that's the stage we're at right now. Councilor Gates, please.
Just to that point, because I think you want to be fair to the residents, at the meeting that was held prior to the election, there was at least this many people at that particular meeting, it was held downstairs here at City Hall, and at no time during that meeting was it suggested or supported by the residents of this area to change the designation at all. So I don't know what transpired prior to that, which would have been in February, I wasn't at that meeting because I didn't get notice, but at the end of the day, that was not what transpired at the meeting that I attended, just prior to our election. Thanks very much.
Going back a year, a year and four months, when that meeting that I'm talking about was conducted.
Okay, are there any other comments from council? No, we're at the council stage, sir. Okay, well, the public meeting with respect to proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Does the council wish to make a motion? Councilor Ianone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wish that, I'll make a motion that council deny the application.
Okay, moved by Councilor Ianone, seconded by Councilor Wang, Councilor Thompson. Did you have a comment? Okay. Councilor Peter Angelo.
Your worship, just listening to the discussion, and I know that it's been said by the developer before, that the application will probably end up with the OMB, I think that, I'm sure that if I ask our planner, if the council should give some reasons as to why they're turning down the application, that would be warranted.
I thought I did.
And so what Councilor Peter Angelo is saying is, the Ontario Municipal Board will be the next logical step for the developer if it's not approved at this level, and so Councilor Peter Angelo is suggesting, he heard the motion, maybe back it up with a little bit of information, Councilor Ianone?
I would like to, I mean, I would like to attach to it, your worship, that the application proposes an over-intensification of a residential area that is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and that the density proposed does not conform with the city's official plan, as it does not have access to an arterial road.
Okay, Councilor Ianone?
I have no problem having that, it's a friendly amendment. I thought that's what I said prior to standing up here, when I said I would make the motion, and my reasons before, and I know the tape's going to end up at the OMB anyway, it's pretty much our comments are going to be there, so I thought I'd done that, but that, he's done it much better.
Okay. Any further comment from the council? I'll call them, Councilor Wang, yeah?
All right, we're going to sort of add some addendums, and it does not comply with the intent of the official plan of avoiding undue concentrations of housing types, and because it would significantly alter the nature of the neighborhood at that as well.
You have everything, Mr. Clerk?
I have the whole.
Okay. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. This concludes the public meeting, so, so thank you very much, everyone, for coming out. Your council has heard your concerns and has reacted, so let's hear the applause meter now for the council. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to the, to the next public meeting. I'd ask the city clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw to permit development at Drummond Road and north of Oldfield Road. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, March 25, 2011, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan amendment and/or zoning bylaw amendment, participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. We'd ask Mr. Hurlovich, our Director of Planning, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, your worship. This application involves 22.8 hectares of land, or 56.5 acres of land, at the northwest corner of Oldfield Road and Drummond Road. The application is for official plan amendment, subdivision approval, and rezoning application simultaneously. The property to the east of the site is zoned for residential purposes, beyond which is the Thundering Waters Golf Course. South of these lands are the, is a provincially significant wetland, as well as Chemtrade. North of the property, the property is bounded by a hydro corridor, beyond which is a residential subdivision. The subdivision proposal that's being submitted to the city council for consideration, together with the official plan and zoning, is to permit a total of 258 single-detached housing units, five blocks of on-street townhouses, one block of condominium townhouses, as well as a block of land as environmental protection, it's a dark green on the plan, and the light green area at the left side of the plan is a stormwater management pond. In addition to the subdivision approval, the applicant has requested certain R1E, those are single-detached dwellings, and he's seeking certain exemptions to the minimum frontage, lot front depth, minimum side yard width, lot coverage depending on which particular properties are involved. There's a R3 zone, which is permits either single-detached, semi-detached, or street townhouses, with six specific provisions as well. The subject size, as I mentioned, is 22.8 hectares in size. They need a official plan amendment, subdivision amendment, or subdivision approval, and zoning bylaw amendment. The lands are currently zoned light industrial, they are designated residential. The application does conform with the provincial growth plan, consistent with the provincial policy statements, found that they provide an appropriate range and mix of housing types. They promote a cost-effective form of development standards, there is or will be public infrastructure available, it contributes 1.25 years of development to the city's supply of serviced and draft-approved lots, and it represents an efficient expansion of the settlement area. The official plan, or the growth plan rather, requires that the density target be 50 people and jobs per hectare. This particular development would provide 40 people and jobs per hectare. However, we believe that because the developer proposes further applications to the south, along Drummond Road, south of Oldfield, or, sorry, Dorchester Road, south of Oldfield... as well as introducing some on-street townhouses and some condominium townhouses. I mentioned the stormwater pond will handle the stormwater. There are sidewalks to be provided in accordance with municipal policy. Rather than collecting additional parkland, we will collect in cash and lieu of parkland. There's a park directly across the hydro corridor from this development, and it will be connected by public walkways. The environmental protection zone has been requested for Block 256. This is to protect the habitat of the roundleaf greenbrier, which is the threatened species in the province of Ontario. To date, the issue of how large an area to protect is unresolved. The Ministry of Natural Resources is responsible for that. They have told the developer that they would be going out and conducting further site visits in March and April. We haven't yet heard any results from the ministry. So, therefore, we're suggesting that the, well, I'm not sure that comment should be in there. Anyway, the other thing is, is that the Conservation Authority has requested a change to Condition Number 33, which would actually recommend approval of the subdivision with the recognition of this environmental protection block for the greenbrier, on the condition that should M&amp;R identify a larger area, the plan would be redlined and revised to reflect those changes, and that the zoning bylaw and official plan would also be changed to reflect the area should the ministry establish a larger area of protection. The lands are currently zoned light industrial, so change in zoning would alleviate the conflict between the official plan and zoning, since the official plan is residential. Block 266 would be an R4 zone to accommodate the townhouse block. We've already dealt with the EPA zone. There are five properties along Drummond Road that are outside of the holdings of Mountain View. They're held by private individuals. Four of those properties are residential. They would be zoned the same residential zone as the housing within the subdivision. And there is a small industrial business on the northwest corner of Oldfield and Drummond Road, and that site would become zoned neighborhood commercial, and in the long term, would become convenience commercial uses to serve the surrounding area. The proposal for the 22.8 hectare site for single-family, street townhouses and block townhouses is supported because it complies with the provincial policies and the regional policies. The subdivision provides a compatible mix of housing types. The lands are sufficiently removed from the, in this balance of the secondary plan area, won't threaten that. The zoning amendments are considered minor deviations from the standard zone provisions. Therefore, staff is recommending that this council amend the official plan to allow this development without first completing the secondary plan, that the Oldfield Road subdivision be approved, and that the mayor be authorized to sign that within 20 days. There'd be no appeals of this decision. The draft appeal approval would last for three years, as a standard. The application for zoning would be approved as outlined in the report. There would be a holding provision on the neighborhood commercial block and some of the lands surrounding that, to ensure that the environmental assessment of those lands can be completed, and a record of site condition filed if it should be proved necessary. And then finally, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the subdivision agreement when the required documents are submitted for registration in the future. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hrlavich. Are there any questions of council? Seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 1724 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anybody other than the applicant that would like to speak? Yes, sir? Please approach the podium, and if you could state your name, Dr. Bakker, and your address.
Yes, I live at 134 Church Street in St. Catherine's. I did send my submission in advance of the meetings. Do you have all copies?
Yes, we did. We did receive that.
I have a, I'll leave a signed copy here for the clerk for your records, and I'll give you the last copy of. At the outset, in between, I completed my signed submission and brief, and I came to a part in the staff report. In addition to the written comments, I'd like to begin with, there's an indication on page three of the staff report. It says, "The proposed subdivision is located south of the existing built boundary." Now, this is something, a matter that had not really hammered into my attention when I wrote my written submission, and I'm almost wondering if there's an error in the report, because if it is like I read it there, my understanding of the way places to grow work, that the development could not be approved, that the built boundary is a line within the urban boundary that can only be exceeded after the municipality has met a test of higher density in its new developments. And you can see that is a difficult process, partly through the contentious debate we had, you know, before this meeting. But, that aside, if it is within the built boundary, I'll go on and deal with the rest of my brief. I would like to think that I think it was sort of premature to deal with this at this meeting. I can only think of the contrast with the recent Fernwood application that I had with Eric Henry. You know, he met with myself and Jean Grandoni and listened carefully to our concerns, and did modify his proposal as a result. Did not seem to be aware that, you know, the forest extended onto his property, and did have a land surveyor go and, you know, make changes to his proposal. I would like to say that although my comments were not in the staff report, a year ago, when the sign was first put up, I was told about the issue, and I did send an email to staff. My concerns in this brief are not that much different than how I had written them, and I think it should have been in your package. Now, also, if you did not make the decision tonight, you would have opportunity for more input from the Ministry of Natural Resources about the final size of the environmental protection area. Now, apart from the issue of the built boundary, the majority of these lands are appropriate, in my view, for development. But I wish to say that I believe the size of the environmental protection areas is inadequate, and this is partly, I believe, why M&amp;R has not yet approved this development. I was quite involved in the Fernwood application, which also had greenbrier habitat, and a key principle there was that this isn't the area plus a buffer where the greenbrier is located that is to be protected. It's the entire area forest canopy that the greenbrier could expand into, because you're dealing with an endangered species here. It just doesn't need to cling on to its small numbers that are now add. It needs to increase its numbers. Now, also, I would like to point out, this forest area is entirely contiguous to the hydro right-of-way. Most of the area is appropriate to develop. The hydro right-of-way essentially everything on the north of that property. You're just talking about a green strip, but a very significant green strip. I walked the entire area, and I counted 10 ponds on the property. I've been there twice, once in the middle of summer, and a lot of those ponds still had water in them. The ponds were surrounded by pin oak. It's a very, very rare ecological community, and four of the 10 ponds had populations of button bush, which is a provincially significant, it's called a rare plant community. And I don't think they're just confined within the boundaries of the present EPA. They extend beyond that. But also suggests that the location of the stormwater management pond that is in an area of forest, I would be pleased if we could see some other way to deal with the stormwater. The stormwater could be perhaps dealt with a facility like that on the land that is owned by hydro arrangement could be made. I don't see it would conflict with the use of their, you know, lines to have stormwater beneath the hydro lines. There's a number of possibilities. Because, and also in conclusion, that, basically, that this is not having the opportunity taken to retain the trees that are on the site. The entire area of Oldfield Road is lined with trees, and there seems to be no effort to keep them in this plan. And some of the area, the EPA, could be expanded through the use of the 5%, you know, park dedication, which has not been applied in this instance. And I also want to bring to your attention that Mr. Henry said that the lots actually sell for more money if you retain forest habitat. So, that's my presentation.
Thanks, very much, Mr. Bakker. One question we can find out from our staff, from Ms. Moldenhauer. Do we know on this proposal, the park dedication, is there any park or EPA allotment in this development, or is it a cash and lieu? Is that what we're doing, Mr. Hrlavich? Do we know?
Your worship, yes, it's cash and lieu. If you look at the slide that's on the screen now, you can see a large white triangular-shaped block north of the hydro corridor. That's the current park, and so there would be actual walkways between the houses across the hydro corridor to reach that park. So, basically, that park would serve the existing neighborhood as well as the new neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bakker.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Ms. Grandoni, would you like to come forward? And state your name and your address, please?
Jean Grandoni, rural route number one, Garner Road, Niagara Falls. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I walked the forest on the subject lands to find the following environmental features, which would qualify the entire forest to be a provincially significant wetland, and worthy of preservation, not destruction, as the developer is racing to do here tonight. First feature I mentioned, at least 10 vernal pools, one very, very large one. And you could say that vernal pools, for most people, is probably a fancy word for what most would call a swamp. And whatever you choose to call it, it is no place to build homes. The pin oak was found, a rare hardwood tree. We found it throughout the, it's actually elongated forest. It gets thinner as you go towards Dorchester, and then there's a wider area towards Drummond. I have an aerial here. The button bush was found in at least four locations. It produces a beige furry round flower, and is, was found in the Fernwood development as well. The Fernwood developer's own ecologist fought his own developer to save the button bush in that subdivision. He actually moved the boundary of the subdivision because he was concerned. Found by others is number four, the greenbrier, currently in dispute with the Ministry of Natural Resources as to amount of area needed to protect it. The small area suggested by the developer to save
That's the current park, and so there would be actual walkways between the houses across the hydro corridor to reach that park. So basically, that park would serve the existing neighborhood as well as the new neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bakker.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Ms. Grandoni, would you like to come forward? And state your name and your address, please.
Jean Grandoni, rural route number one, Garner Road, Niagara Falls. And I have a letter to hand out. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I walked the forest on the subject lands to find the following environmental features, which would qualify the entire forest to be a provincially significant wetland and worthy of preservation, not destruction, as the developer is racing to do here tonight. First feature I mentioned, at least ten vernal pools, one very, very large one. And you could say that vernal pools, for most people, is probably a fancy word for what most would call a swamp. And whatever you choose to call it, it is no place to build homes. The pin oak was found, a rare hardwood tree. We found it throughout the, it's actually elongated forest. It gets thinner as you go towards Dorchester, and then there's a wider area towards Drummond. I have an aerial here. The button bush was found in at least four locations. It produces a beige furry round flower and was found in the Fernwood development as well. The Fernwood developer's own ecologist fought his own developer to save the button bush in that subdivision. He actually moved the boundary of the subdivision because he was concerned. Found by others is number four, the greenbrier, currently in dispute with the Ministry of Natural Resources as to amount of area needed to protect it. The small area suggested by the developer to save the greenbrier is unacceptable, and this attempt ignores the other rare aforementioned species and features found throughout the forest. Nature of the forest, you cannot judge it from a roadside view. You must put your boots on and walk it. And I must admit that when John said he was interested in this, I didn't realize until I did walk it what was there. It's an elongated shape, as I already mentioned, a dense understory, and estimated to be some 10 to 15 acres if you count the entire length of it. It is right beside the Ramsey Road Forest, which is rated the number one forest in the city's urban wooded and treat inventory assessment study of 1993. It is one of the wettest forest areas that I have seen personally. The vernal pools, as well as being important habitat for frogs and many small aquatic forms of life, these pools provide the only clean source of water for nearby wildlife due to raw sewage overflows into our creeks and rivers throughout the city. Stormwater management pond, I oppose its location in the forest where mature trees will be lost. Environmental agency comments, the Ministry of Natural Resources and Conservation Authority concerns are not resolved on the greenbrier issue. Region of Niagara, concern that the MNR and NPCA issues are not addressed. Carolinian Canada, they have a federally funded Carolinian forest recovery program to expand such forests, yet this town continues to destroy them. And this is using taxpayer money to try and regenerate new Carolinian forests, same kind that we're always destroying around here. I know the effort to preserve is a little bit better than it was because the province pushed you into it, but there needs to be more grassroots effort. Parkland, none dedicated, only cash. And I missed one here. Wood for your houses, where does it come from? The forest. Sewer capacity, in earlier city reports, the sewers in the area were said to be in an overflow or backup state. This subdivision contradicts all environmental legislation to date, particularly source protection of surface and groundwater and related studies of the Conservation Authority. Building in environmentally sensitive areas such as this breeds and multiplies all kinds of sanitary sewer problems, including homeowner basement flooding and raw sewage overflows, which presently you are spending millions on. Presently, you cannot find money to properly service existing housing. Prohibiting development in areas such as found here would prevent many such costly problems in the future. Developers ask for exemptions from development charges, then at the same time want to build in the wrong places, such as this, where taxpayers end up footing the bill to correct servicing problems that arise later. If council is serious about keeping taxes down, development in wetlands such as this should not be approved. The budget starts here, and certainly trimming the budget starts here. Developers should be held responsible through the conditions of approval for all sewer problems that occur in their subdivisions years after houses are built. The present policy of granting servicing clearance certificates to developers just a short time after subdivision is underway should be abolished. Then you would see they would not be in such a hurry to destroy and build in wetlands and our streams. The same politicians pretending to be concerned about coyotes are the same ones voting to destroy their forest habitat. There was a claim made in the newspaper that coyotes don't travel in packs. Let me tell you that I was an eyewitness to a pack of eight coyotes marching in a straight line across the top of my garden at dusk on Garner Road last year, and they were headed east towards the city. I shall never forget that scene. Procedure for approval, the same railroading of the Fernwood procedure is being applied to this development tonight. If you want this forest protected, you have to vote against approval and tell the Ministry of Natural Resources what you want and not just pass the decision and responsibility to another government agency. It is this council's mandate to protect the environment and forest as much as MNR or any other government. It is time council became part of the solution and not part of the environment problem. Clearcutting, council should keep in mind that this entire parcel was all forest and all but the remaining remnant forest was clear cut years ago. Lots sold beside a forest. They reap higher profits. One developer told me he was offered as much as $150,000 for a lot next to a forest, and that was just last year. And so there is adequate compensation. Question, why is the secondary plan held up? I stand opposed to this approval procedure and to any approvals until the forest is preserved. And I have an aerial here that I would like to pass around. I believe this aerial is prior to the field being plowed because you can still see a lot of the original pockets of wetlands. But you can see the long forest along the northern edge that Dr. Bakker also referred to. And then this area in here, a forest that is still standing, but I guess you could call it immature because it was probably the mature trees were, a lot of the mature trees were taken out, but there are some large ones in there and there are large ones all across here, particularly a pin oak. And I would just like to pass that around, so, and then I would like it back, please, because I don't have one of those, they're very costly. But I would like my question answered. Why is the secondary plan held up?
Okay, we'll ask Mr. Hrlavich to comment. The, your worship, the developer's working with the Conservation Authority to identify all of the wetlands south of Oldfield Road, and that is part of what they're working on.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Grandoni?
Well, what about the built boundary? Is this not, this development, this is outside of the built boundary, is it not?
That's correct. It's a greenfield property.
Then are you allowed to develop it?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, I'll check that out with the province.
Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the developer that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Welcome, Mr. Lusick.
Thank you, worship. It's good to see you there tonight.
Good to be here.
Your worship, for the record, my name is Ed Lusick, and I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Broderick and Partners in Niagara Falls. And I appear this evening on behalf of Thundering Waters Development Corporation and Oldfield Development, Inc., who are the owners of the subject property. And my client is a local company whose principles include a number of people who I think are familiar to the members of council, some of whom are here, Mark Bassiano, Nick and Dragan Matovic. Others who are members of or own these companies are Tony Zapatelli, Fred Varela, and Mary Oduba. And these are individuals with solid track records, both in business and in community efforts. Your worship, as always, we appreciate the efforts of your staff, in particular, your planning staff, with respect to the preparation of the report that you have before you. And I'm pleased to say that we're supportive of the conditions and the recommendations in the staff report, with one major exception, and that is condition number 33 of Appendix A to the report. Condition number 33 is one of 41 conditions that are listed in Appendix A, and condition 33 reads as follows, that the developer agreed to meet all conditions of the Ministry of Natural Resources with respect to the protection of any greenbrier habitat on the lands, including any necessary modification to the draft approved plan of subdivision. Your worship, unfortunately for us, this is a critical issue that could effectively prevent us from going forward, and in our view is totally unjustified, and we hope to be able to explain why in the next few minutes. So I'm not going to dwell on any other issue in the staff report because we agree with all of the other positions that staff has taken, all other 40 conditions we agree with, but this one, we can't agree with. So we are going to be asking council, your worship, to approve the report, but to delete condition 33 and delete any reference to this condition in Appendix A of the report. Now, joining me tonight for the purpose of this presentation will be Lisa Campbell. And Lisa Campbell is, in my opinion, the preeminent biologist in Niagara. She's a professor and has provided expert advice and reports on this matter, and will be speaking to you about her views with respect to condition 33. And also present with me tonight is Rick Brady, who you know, he is our professional planner. He doesn't intend to do a presentation, but he's available to assist where necessary. Your worship, in essence, our objection to condition 33 is that it is not fair, it's not justified, and it's not an appropriate condition under the circumstances in this case. In particular, the condition does not accord with the regulations that are pertinent to the protection of the plant and its habitat as a species at risk and to the science that is available on this subject. And Ms. Campbell will take you through this with a presentation that she's done, the hard copy of which I'm going to distribute to you, and I've turned over a page that I want to refer to. So if you don't mind keeping the page that I've turned over in the report open in front of you, because I'm going to refer to it in my presentation. If I can continue while it's swinging. Your worship, in order to fully understand our position, it may be helpful, particularly for newer members of council, to briefly review some of the history leading up to tonight in advance of Ms. Campbell's presentation. Ms. Campbell is going to provide you with the substantive information relating to the presence of the roundleaf greenbrier and its protection. And she's going to do a brief PowerPoint, which essentially is what the hard copy that I've distributed to you is. But I've turned over one page that I want to refer to, which has to do with the history that I'm going to talk about, that I think is relevant for you to understand the matter in the context of what has actually happened. So members of this council, who were also on the last council, and they're obviously a majority, will be aware of some of this background because most of it took place during the life of the last council, and in fact, it was the last council who dealt with most of this and approved most of it. The application before you this evening involves, as you know, the potential proposed development for residential of the most northerly 56 acres of the total thorough, or the total Thundering Waters residential community. And if you look at the drawing that I've, or the plan that I've distributed, the area that is founded in red on that plan that's turned up is the area that is the Thundering Waters residential community, as I refer to it and is referred to in your planning documents. And so the 56 acres to the north, north of Oldfield, is the part that's before you tonight for approval. But I want to talk a little bit about how we got to this point with respect to the larger community that this is part of. We made an application to take this land, and my client owns all of this land, and it's approximately 620 acres of land. We made an application for all of the land, including the subject parcel, to this council by way of amendment application to the city's official plan in the end of 2005, beginning of 2006. And our application proposed redesignating the lands from industrial and open space to residential and environmental protection, including the lands covered by the application before you. And this council, on March 31st, held a hearing on that application, and on April 28th, it approved our application and passed Amendment Number 81, which the region approved, and as I'll mention in a moment, the Ontario Municipal Board also approved. So all of the lands were redesignated from industrial and open space to residential and environmental protection. To get to the point of approval of OPA 81, my client was required to provide the city and various public agencies, including the MNR and the NPCA and the region, with extensive information respecting many matters, including the protection of environmental features on the site, compliance with provincial growth initiatives, land use compatibility, environmental site condition, compatibility with environmental sites, conversion from industrial to residential, transportation and servicing, phasing, residential densities, urban design, recreational needs, and the need for a secondary plan to ensure compliance with a number of the matters going forward. In particular, my client had to satisfy the city and other agencies, including the MNR and the NPCA, with respect to issues involving the natural heritage and the environment, and did so by providing extensive work, scientific work, most of which or much of which was prepared by Ms. Campbell. This process required us to get the approval of the city and all other agencies for official plan number 81, and the process took over two and a half years. It was carried out concurrently with other work that we needed to provide the city with in connection with the province's growth plan initiatives and with the conversion of industrial lands to residential. And through the extensive work that my client did and subject to its agreement with the various conditions that were opposed, my client was able to satisfy the city and all public agencies, including the MNR, the NPCA, and the region, on all of the issues that were raised in connection with our application. As such, today, the lands that comprise this 620-acre parcel, including the subject property, includes, or is designated for residential development and is represented in your planning documents to be in conformity with your official plan and the region's policy plan, including the growth plan policies and the region's environmental policies. And last year, you went through an exercise with your own official plan to bring those policies in conformity to the region's policies, and you passed OPA Number 96 to do that. In fact, I think as you are very well aware, this area proposes the largest development area for residential until the year 2031, the threshold for the growth plan, and is really where Niagara Falls is intended to grow by virtue of your own planning documents, the region's planning documents, and the numbers that have been generated and the numbers that the province wants you to have in order to have residential development in this community. In essence, you're depending on this to be developed. In the course of the review of our application for OPA 81, before it was approved in 2008, the MNR, the region, and the NPCA were all consulted and reviewed the application and had no objections. One of the primary matters that was reviewed involved the extent to which the developer would set aside lands for the protection of natural heritage and the environment to be designated as environmentally protected areas in the official plan where no development could take place. Through this process of consultation and discussions between the parties, my client agreed to increase the lands to be protected and designate EPA where no development could take place from 129 acres that were originally proposed by the MNR to 172 acres, which was the size of the EPA areas approved in official plan 81. And this designation was intended to deal with the need to protect natural heritage features on the lands, and in particular, the lands designated as provincially significant wetlands. Now, OPA Number 81 was not objected to or appealed by the MNR, the region, or the NPCA. An appeal was filed by the Preservation of Agricultural Land Society, Mr. Bakker, PALS is the acronym. However, that appeal was withdrawn, and OPA Number 81 came into force with the approval of the Ontario Municipal Board. Now, the approval, or the withdrawal of the PALS appeal was predicated on minutes of settlement between PALS and my client entered into voluntarily and in good faith, which provided for the MNR, even though they hadn't objected to OP 81, hadn't objected to the size of the area that we were protecting. It provided for the MNR to have access, even after OP 81 was approved, to our sites to do other review, further review if necessary. So subsequent to the approval, this is after two and a half years, by the OMB of OP 81 in July of 2008, the MNR, in fact, did request access to the Thundering Waters residential community. And during the period from October 2008 till April 2010, that's just last year, that's another year and a half, there were numerous meetings, site visits, and discussions with MNR and our consultants and our principals, including two visits by the Assistant Deputy Minister of the MNR and the Supervisor of the Guelph Regional District of the MNR. Among other things, we were asked to do work, and the MNR did work, in conjunction with its staff and our consultants during this period that included an extensive report or study on the wetlands, Ontario Wetland Evaluation Study, acronym O's, genetic testing of salamanders on the site that were believed to be endangered, but were cleared, an assessment of green ash on the site, and other field work to authenticate the findings of our biologist's reports produced for OP 81. So as a result of this work, completed with So, as a result of this work, completed with the MNR and all the parties in early 2010 to revise the EPA, the scope and the size of the 172 acres, which had been 128 acres, became 228 acres. So, we're now contributing, or setting aside, 228 acres of a 620-acre site as EPA. And the yellow areas that are within the red-defined area of the community are the areas that we're setting aside for EPA. So, at no time during the various visits, during, including mapping exercises carried out by MNR staff during this four-and-a-half-year period, was there any concern expressed by the MNR with respect to the lands north of Oldfield, the lands that are the subject of this application. So, believing that the environmental issues had been resolved after four and a half years and after dedicating 228 acres of land, subject to the necessary studies required by the OPA on the lands to the south of Oldfield, my client brought forward its application for this development, for the draft plan development on the 56 acres north of Oldfield. It did so, A, because it had no indication, after all this work and all this study, that the MNR and the MPCA had any problems with it, and it did so because it was the most logical area to develop. It's the closest to the residential development that already exists, Drummond Park Village to the north, and to the east, the zoned Thundring Waters Village, which is outside of the residential community. And it's also the most logical in terms of services, which are in essence there. Our application was deemed complete by the city, by city staff, this application, in November of 2010. An initial public meeting, a neighborhood meeting with real neighbors who actually live there, was held on November 29th. We didn't receive any opposition, any negative comments with respect to any real neighbors who live around there with respect to this application. And now, our application sets aside an area in the draft to protect the Roundleaf Greenbrier, its habitat, and a buffering area. And this has been done in accordance with a real study done by a biologist, Ms. Campbell, who will speak to you more in detail about this, and in accordance with her advice, and in accordance with the actual rules with respect to species at risk, and in accordance with her scientific analysis. To put the area that we are holding back into perspective, it's approximately eight or nine lots with a value of anywhere between a half a million and a million dollars, and represents every single stem of every single plant of this species that was ever found on our property, including habitat and buffering. This, of course, is in addition to the 228 acres that we're preserving for environmental protection south of Oldfield. The city was notified, or notified the MPCA that it was proceeding with our application, and asked for any draft conditions to be submitted by November 26, 2010. And of course, on November 26, 2010, the city received a letter from the MPCA in which it indicated that they had four additional things that they wanted us to review, in spite of the fact that we had provided a full environmental impact study that no one had provided any negative comments to. So, the four issues that were raised in the November 26 letter from the MPCA were firstly, the amount of significant habitat identified for the Roundleaf Greenbrier; secondly, potential impacts of the woodland area identified; thirdly, the potential for significant wildlife habitat; and fourthly, additional mitigation required for the wetlands south of Oldfield. The city requested my client, Mr. Hurlivitz, requested my client to meet with the MPCA to try to resolve these four issues, so that the application could be proceeded with. We met with the MPCA, and they asked our biologist to do further work on her environmental impact study. She did an addendum, and she did another addendum, and then she did a justification report, which they requested. So, finally, in its letter to the city of March 7, 2011, the MPC indicated that it was clearing all of the conditions with the exception of the Greenbrier. They're the authority that has jurisdiction in this area. And with respect to the Greenbrier, it's my view and my understanding that the MPCA staff itself had no problems with what we were doing in terms of protecting it. But what they said in their letter to the city was that they didn't have expertise in this area, so they were referring to the MNR, who had spent about four and a half years on the site without identifying any problem in this area to us. So, of course, we get a letter from the MNR, the city actually gets a letter from the MNR, which is a grand total of four sentences. It's an email, and it says that they want to do some more testing between the end of March and the beginning of April. Well, it's April 18th, we've received nothing from the MNR. The MNR has in mind extending the area not where the plant is located, and not where our expert, who's the only expert who's looked at this, says that the habitat may be required, but beyond that, to an area that doesn't have a plant, and in our opinion, according to our expert advice, isn't going to grow a plant in the future. And the extent of what they want to do, possibly, would ruin the entire subdivision. Our proposal with respect to the Roundleaf Greenbrier protects every stem of every plant and in our property with a minimum of 14-meter buffer and fencing and a maximum of 40 meters. The area has never been studied by any other biologist from the MNR that suggests that our biology, our science is wrong, and there's been no suggestion that the regulations as we present them are in any way incorrect. And so, maybe this is a good time for me to turn this over to our expert, who's going to take you through her PowerPoint presentation. And I just want to make one other comment. We've actually never received, you've never received a letter from the MNR. The extent of what you've received from the MNR, which was adopted by the MPCA and then put in a condition by the region, is this four-line email wanting to do another site inspection. They've never actually expressed an opinion with respect to this. So, I'll sit down now and I'll let Ms. Campbell continue, and I'll have a couple of short comments to conclude.
They'd be as brief as the first one. Welcome, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. I think I can just click on this. So, I'm hoping to bring some clarification to, with regard to the Roundleaf Greenbrier, which seems to be the outstanding issue on this subdivision application. This plant's also known as common Greenbrier or catbrier, and there's a few other names. In terms of my own background, some of you I know, I believe in the councillors. I've gotten bachelor, an Honours Bachelor's degree in ecology and a Masters of Science degree in freshwater ecology. I'm a tenured professor at Niagara College, and I teach in the environmental program and have been there for about 14 years. And I've been actively consulting in the predominantly Niagara area for the last 12 years, looking primarily at impact assessments as well as species at-risk assessments. My knowledge of this particular area dates back several years. I originally started working on the subject lands and the surrounding property within the development, general development area in 2004. Previously worked on the Thundring Waters Gulf Course lands. And throughout all of these studies, we were looking at multi-year studies, multi-season, multi-year. So, there's quite a bit of data that's been put together over the last seven years to come up with some of the conclusions that we have. The Oldfield subdivision lands were originally evaluated in 2007, and they've been monitored since that time, because the application obviously has not moved forward yet. Oh, why am I not going? This was the map that you were shown briefly, and again, these are the wetland areas that were identified in consultation with the Ministry of Natural Resources. The area did expand significantly, and again, these were joint, joint field assessments that we did. I'm registered as a wetland evaluator as well, so I was on-site with the ministry to conduct the evaluations and come up with common grounds as to where we thought the limits should be. You'll note that there were no wetlands identified north of Oldfield Road. So, although there was a hedgerow or forested area identified, the ministry at the time that we did the field evaluations did not acknowledge any wetlands north of Oldfield. The actual subdivision, I've got an overlay there of what the subdivision plan looks like on top of it. It's a little bit difficult to see, but there is a hedgerow that divides the field area, that would be south of the hedgerow, from the hydro corridor, which is immediately north. Within that area, you'll see that there's a very, very small area, and I'll blow up for you, where we determined the Greenbrier to be present. This is a blow-up of the actual area. Again, over multiple field seasons and multiple visits, including a visit with the Ministry of Natural Resources to document the Greenbrier, the limits of the actual plant within the hedgerow were delineated with GPS coordinates, and they've been mapped. So, you'll see that there's a large white blob, which is sort of the primary area where the plant exists. There is a smaller one on the southern area here, and then there's some very tiny, tiny, you'll see that there've been documents. This is where we've seen little sprouts or what looks like new plants coming up, so those were documented as well. The block itself was established, looking at some of the other features within the area. The hedgerow itself is actually, and it's difficult to see if you're not used to looking at air photos, the hedgerow or the edge of the trees is actually about halfway through this area, and the rest of this is sort of field out through there. The block was sort of designed and redesignated so that it would include some of the button bush that's identified within the area, as well as black gum trees that sit right on the border of the property and the hydro corridor. Unfortunately, hydro maintenance is actively cutting these on a regular basis, so we try to maintain them within the block. It was also restructured so that there would be a path on this one side, so that there is no house immediately adjacent to, and you'll see that the road is out in front. So, we only have one neighboring property onto this identified area. Now, the area itself was identified after a consultation with the provincial policy statement requirements, as well as the species at-risk legislation. The plant itself is a woody vine-type plant. Again, it varies in terms of the height and structure. Typically, you'll find it about a meter off the ground, but because it has tendrils like grape or something like that, it does have the ability to climb up other plants, so it will get height if there's other plants for it to attach to. It typically prefers moist-to-wet woodlands with sandy or moderately coarse soils, and seems to prefer openings in the canopy for any sort of young growth. The status of it right now is threatened both provincially and nationally. This table just goes through a little bit of the information and outlines for you the different status categories that the Ministry of Natural Resources Species at-Risk Legislation identifies. You'll see that the threatened species are sort of in the midpoint of the table, and this is species that are at risk of becoming endangered in Ontario if limiting factors are not reversed. And so, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the limiting factors. You'll note, based on the range table or figures that have been provided, the Ontario populations are really spread between two key areas. There is the Niagara population, and then there's the Essex population, with a little bit also identified on the tip of, or the edge of the area there. One of the issues that we have with this plant is that the Niagara area is basically the northern limit of good habitat for this plant, and so it does not thrive very well just because of the limited habitat characteristics that we have. You'll see on the bottom figure here, the actual spread of this plant in through the United States is much greater, where the habitat and the climate is more conducive to growth. Actually, in the States, there's no level of protection on this species, and it is considered an invasive weed in some states. So, there are about nine sites that are being monitored, but again, it's not actively being looked for, which is one of the issues that we have. Threats and limitations, again, as I said, it's at the northern limit of its range right now, so it's never been identified as a species that is common in Ontario. So, it's not that it was common, and because of limitations, it's now not common. It's never actually been common here. The most recent data we have is probably the natural areas inventory data that the Conservation Authority generated in 2007. But other than that, right now, there is no active program to identify the species itself, its habitat requirements, there's no habitat management plan, and there's no active recovery program. So, nobody's really watching what's happening with this. And again, probably because there are a couple hundred different species at risk in the threatened and endangered categories, and we have 13 habitat management plans in place provincially. The plant itself is unique in that it, although it can reproduce asexually, the seeds are only produced if you have a male and female plant in the same area, and it produces fruit, which produces seeds. The problem is that the seed number that is typically produced if you do have both plant sexes in the area is relatively small, and it's actively eaten by birds and wildlife. They also find that, based on the conditions that we have, that the viability of new seedlings is very low. So, it's not actively reproducing itself in areas. In areas where there is asexual reproduction or cloning going on, it will pop up as new plants by root structures or tubers. So, you will see that that occurs as well. Now, the current legislation, and again, in terms of identifying an area, the challenge we have is that there are no guidelines right now for this species. And so, there's no examples of other areas, what they've done, or how they're managing the species at all. So, the current Species at-Risk Legislation requires that the habitat of the species be protected, but because there are no guidelines, the habitat for the species is identified as what's called general habitat, as opposed to species-specific habitat. And with general habitat, the intention is that you are protecting the immediate habitat for the actual plant, so that it can continue to persist in that area. And that's in the absence of having a species-specific habitat management plan. One of the things that it's not in your presentation, but I did want to make a point. The Species at-Risk Policy 4.1, that's Habitat Protection of Endangered Threatened Species, you can get this online, there's a policy pertaining to general habitat protection guidelines, which currently addresses most of the actual species that are identified under the Species at-Risk Legislation. And the General Habitat Protection Guidelines stipulate that for general habitat protection, it does not include the area where the species formerly occurred, if it was historically in that area, nor does it include any of the lands it has potential to reproduce or recover in, unless existing members of that species are already present to carry on their life processes. So, I just wanted to make reference to that, because it does sort of point to the fact that the ministry had said, well, we should keep more area, because it might spread into these areas, but their actual legislation does not require that. The habitat evaluation process on this piece of property included field evaluations of the plants, the habitats, and the plant coverage, and it said we went through, GPS did, we did this in consultation with the ministry, so they have been on-site on several times. We looked at the current legislation pertaining to species at risk, and again, there were no habitat guidelines or requirements for this species. So, we delineated the areas, and we put approximately 15-meter buffer on to see sort of the general area. That area, if you look back a few slides at the actual area, you'll see is substantially larger. The area that's actually delineated as the area for protection is 125 meters by 40 meters. So, it's twice the existing width of the actual hedgerow right now, and 125 meters long, and encompasses all of the actual plants that are there and incorporates a buffer around them. The rationale behind the buffer was using the Ministry of Natural Resources Heritage Technical Guidelines. And the closest, I guess, species that we would have that's considered a species at risk that we could compare would be something like the flowering dogwood, which is a much larger plant. It's like a tree shrub-type plant. And the specifications that the Ministry of Natural Resources have specified for that plant is a 20-meter radius. And again, it's a much larger plant. So, the applicants did actually then readjust their layout, took out some of the existing lots to create a larger protection area, and we created an area in the layout so that some of the current limitations or factors that are affecting this hedgerow would not occur, things like yard clippings from adjacent land uses and things like that. The area that has now been identified has got very good road exposure, and there's only one property abutting it. And they have indicated that they'd like it fenced, the Conservation Authority, so in all likelihood, it will also be fenced with proper signage. So, it'll be much easier to create a block that's actually being actively managed and doesn't have the ability for local neighbors to destroy. You're going to see if kids are playing in there, you're going to see if people are dumping garbage into the area. The habitat protection measures, then, that were employed on the site were to delineate the area and incorporate it into the subdivision as an EPA area, and this EPA is in addition to all of the EPA lands that are south. There are very similar characteristics or features of vegetation south of Oldfield as well. The plants of concern are being 100% preserved, and there is space allotted around them so that should they reproduce, they can also, there's enough land for them to reproduce or continue to persist. And that's the key word, is that right now, the regulation requires that we preserve the habitat that allows the species to persist in its current location. We have talked with the ministry, and we have suggested, because there's no active propagation going on, or no active recovery of the species, we sort of questioned, well, what's the ministry doing to try to make this more common than it is currently? And so, we did suggest to them that we could look at active propagation techniques and look at increasing the diversity of the species south of Oldfield, where we have enormous blocks of land that are going to be preserved. The conclusions, then, that we have The conclusions, then, that we have drawn from this is that the area identified for protection of the species and the habitat is in accordance with the current and relevant regulations and policies, including the PPS and the Species at Risk Legislation. The extent of the plant habitat was verified, and there's no additional lands, there's no other small plants we didn't find in any of that area. And again, the ministry has been up to the site on several times. The ministry has not identified any other areas or additional lands that need to be protected based on the actual presence of the plant, and if they have, they haven't given us any of that information. Ministry staff, and again, the ministry staff ranges from their local staff to the deputy minister, have all been out to the site now, been out to document the location of this plant and the actual characteristics that are out there. The Ministry of Natural Resources indicated that they wanted to do additional field work, however, we haven't heard from them yet, so I'm not really sure if they've been on-site or not. And we've not received any correspondence from them, so I'm not really sure what the status is. I do, or I have been hoping to encourage them to look at opportunities for active recovery. I think that this is something that is potential, and the landowners, because they own all the property itself, thought that would be something else, that they could actually look at propagating it and actually increasing the coverage in this area.
Any questions for Ms. Campbell? Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
So to summarize, Your Worship, our position is that, as I said earlier, the Condition 33 isn't fair, justified, or appropriate. It's not in accordance with the biology, with the science, or with the regulations. And the MNR hasn't come forward with anything that justifies this condition whatsoever. They've just delayed us, basically, and they've just told us, we're going to look at it at some point in the future. So we say to you, put the shoe on the other foot. If they have a case, if they want to present cases, the case, if they have some science, they can bring it to the Ontario Municipal Board, they can appeal the bylaw. Go forward and approve the recommendations in this report, delete Condition 33, please, and the related references to it in Appendix A, and ask your staff, please, to direct, or direct your staff to prepare the necessary bylaws for council to enact as soon as possible. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Lustig. Are there, that part of the meeting is concluded, Mr. Bakker. Are there any questions of council for Mr. Lustig? Okay. Public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Motion by Councilor Thompson.
Yes, I have to say, without exception, I was extremely impressed with the presentations that were made tonight, both pro and con, and certainly Lisa Campbell's presentation was extremely thorough. And unlike the previous development that was being proposed, this is rather isolated. It's an overall new development. And after listening to the presentations with respect to the painstaking efforts and investigation into the concerns that have been expressed over the past several years with respect to this development, I have no concerns, and this whole situation will probably be vetted again through another body. So I think it's appropriate to move it on, and I would move the approval of the development as proposed with the deletion of Condition 33.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Councilor Thompson, second by Councilor Anoni. Are there any comments? Councilor Gates?
Yeah, actually, I probably should ask the representative for the property on Number 33.
Yes.
After I finish, you can answer them all at one time. Maybe you can give an explanation on why that's important to have it taken out of the documentation, because obviously, you're talking about 41, right, and you're asking to take out 33. So maybe you can do an explanation there. The other thing that I have some concerns with, and this is something that I think's really important in the city, I know that I live in the Preakness area, we have a nice park right there that our family goes and enjoys. I enjoyed it with my daughter when she was a little younger, but now I've got grandkids, and we go to the park, and it's kind of like the fabric of the neighborhood. So I do have a concern with Number 13, with the cash and loo for the 5% parkland dedication. I really think that if we're going to make these type of investments and this type of housing, especially the amount of housing here, that parkland is very, very important for the overall health of that particular development. So I'd like you to address Number 13 as well. I don't know if I have any other questions on that. The only thing I think, and I agree with Councilor Thompson, I do appreciate the work that went in by both the presenters, both pro and con. I'm not an expert on this stuff, you know, I'm going to put my hand up and say I'm not, but I certainly care about our environment, and I care about what's going on. So I do appreciate them coming and raising these issues. Would like an explanation on 33, and again, Number 13. I think that's very, very important to the overall health of the city by having parkland.
With respect to 33, Counselor, our position, our case, is really that 33 is unjustified, because you have on one side, a biologist who's actually gone on the site, has done the scientific measurements, and has come to the conclusion that between the scientific measurements and the regulations that she's referred to, we're protecting enough property. And on the other side, you have the MNR, who've had more than enough opportunity over four and a half, five years to produce anything, any shred of scientific evidence, any indication of the regulations that would drive them to expand the area to an area that doesn't have any of this plant present, and they produce nothing. And so we say it's unfair to us, in the absence of any credible evidence that contradicts our evidence, that we should be stopped. If the MNR has that evidence, they can go to the Ontario Municipal Board and present it, and we'll meet them there. But they haven't so far, so it's unfair. And with respect to 13, perhaps if I could defer to our planner, who's here on that, the Planning Act allows for cash and loo instead, and I'm not an expert in this area, and I can only assume that between our planner and the city's planner, that it was felt to be more appropriate to do cash and loo, because there is an existing park to the north. Perhaps, Mr. Brady, you can respond to that.
When we were doing pre-consultation on this particular development, we met with both the planning staff and the parks and recreation staff, and there were a number of things that we normally talk about at those times. One of the issues that was on the table at the time was whether or not there was a need for a park in this area, and if there was a park in the area, the size and scale of the park, be it a neighborhood park or a community park, et cetera. We were told that there was no need for a park, and that the city staff did not want a park, they wanted the 5% cash and loo. I can tell you, Alderman Gates, we went back a couple of times on this, to be absolutely certain, because I had anticipated that it would be a legitimate question to ask. There are parks very close at hand, right across the hydro corridor, and we have built walkway systems into this particular subdivision that would make it easy for children or yourself to take your grandchildren, if you will, to have a walk across the hydro corridor to the existing parks. That's why there is no park associated with it.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other, yeah, Counselor Wing, then Counselor Morocco?
Thank you. Just to pick up, first of all, on one of Counselor Gates's points, when I first joined council in 1997, we weren't taking cash and loo for parkland. Either we took parkland, or we took nothing at all. And it was actually when the Lundie house was ripped down in late 97, well, subsequent to that, I was having a conversation with somebody knowledgeable who said, well, the city could have taken parkland as their dedication and have preserved the, something on the site for the house to be shifted onto, and saved that heritage feature. And I would think that by the same logic, we could accept actual parkland and use it to save potentially important environmental areas. But that's not what I was going to focus on here. To me, this application is premature. What really jumped out for me in the readings was in the background, where it says that the subject lands are designated residential with a special policy designation, which is Special Policy Area 56. And this requires development to occur in accordance with a secondary plan adopted as an amendment to the official plan. We don't have that in place. The applicants applying for an official plan amendment that would allow these lands to be developed prior to the completion of that secondary plan. So right away, this says to me, this application's premature, it's out of sync. And what really got me worried was the request this evening to remove Condition 33, because I see that as vitally important, especially given the fact that this whole application is coming in in a premature way. That makes Condition 33, which asks that the developer meet all conditions of the MNR with respect to the protection of greenbrier habitat, including any necessary modification to the plan of subdivision, that make, you know, we're going to process this now, that makes that condition even more important. Just trying to, oh yes, the other thing that I was very concerned about was we have a letter from the president of the Niagara Falls Nature Club. And she notes that as the plan now stands, the greenbrier habitat will be cut off from other natural areas, and she doesn't mention the button bush, which I see the developer's consultant has acknowledged is there, and which someone else has advised is provincially rare. So we're focusing on one threatened species and kind of ignoring the other one, which sounds to me might even be more important. But these plants will be cut off from the other natural areas. Current scientific accepted practices demonstrate that in order to sustain species at risk in the long term, their habitats must be connected to other forested areas. Where natural habitats are reduced in size and fragmented, exotic species invade and outcompete native species. Then she goes on to point out that development around the wetlands would result in the loss of connectivity of the natural system. And I can certainly see that if we want to do, if we want to eventually see some recovery if the plan, if the province brings in plant management plans, we'll need those corridors to help these plants to do more than just persist in the limited areas they're found now. But even more important is the idea that, the point here, that one reason the Niagara Falls now has a problem with coyotes traveling through residential areas is because we have allowed sprawling subdivisions to cut off natural corridors between forested areas. And I know when I look at one of the overheads, it was this one, or not the overheads, the windows, there was one, it came around to us with this particular map, but if you step over, you can see all the forests surrounding the site, and how much forest there is on the site, and how it really does connect forested areas. And to me, it's, we really are proceeding in too hasty a fashion. The letter from the Niagara Falls Nature Club concludes by speaking about the rich biodiversity here, and how this forms one of the largest forested areas within an urban boundary in Carolinian, Canada. And once again, when you think about Canada, a lot of it is prairie, a lot of it is Canadian shield, there's very little really good farmland, like, you know, only half of a percent is Class 1 soils, there's very little Carolinian forest left, and we just happen to possess a lot of this stuff here in the Niagara region, and in particular, here in Niagara Falls. I believe that for the future, we need to preserve it. And I know this probably won't get support, but I will move that deferral until the Ministry of Natural Resources can complete their studies, and that for the developer also to complete their secondary plan, and we can proceed with all the information together on the table at once.
So we have a motion for deferral. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, the motion is defeated. Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morocco?
I was close to supporting Janice's deferral on that, but I just have to say, I mean, you can see the development is going that way, there's no doubt, I guess, and if we wanted to protect the farmland, we should maybe just buy up the land and farm it. But unfortunately, that's just not the way it's going to be. So there, I think this development is going to happen, I'd just like to see that we have some type of control. I don't like the fact that we're going to take out 33, because obviously, our staff put 33 in there, and I'm not really big on the 5% for loo and cash instead of a park. You've got, I just want to make sure, Your Worship, sorry, that we have 258 residents going in, five blocks of on-street town housing, and one block for future condominium town houses. That's a lot of people in one area, and there's not even a park area for the kids. You know, I'm just, I like to think that we're going to preserve as much of the forest land that we possibly can, so I support Janice on that. And another thing, too, is that I think those residents have to have something or someplace for those kids to play in their park. I think we went through that around Preakness at some point, too, where they were upset they didn't have a park. So maybe you can address, where is the park that I'm trying to find out? Where's the closest park that these residents, children would go to?
We'll get it on the screen.
I'm just trying to, sorry, figure that out.
So, Your Worship, the, it's a triangular place where you can see residential uses, there's a white triangle, that's a park next to the hydro corridor.
Okay.
No, not that one.
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to have streetlights on there. It's this land in here. This is the parkland.
Okay. And that park plan is for how many residents?
I don't know. Catherine, do you have that information?
I guess what I'm just getting to, I think, this is quite the distance of an area for these residents to go for that park. I don't know why we're not designating in every subdivision. I mean, green spaces, it's not a problem with extra green space with parkland, so... That's just one thing I wish they would put in there, or consider looking at... Unless our city staff is the one that recommended we take the cash and loo instead of the park?
Well, it is.
Through you, Maryetta.
Yeah, sorry, Your Worship, that would have been calculated by our parks people as to how many acres of park we need per person, and they would have then sent us to comments to say that additional land was not needed, that they would take the cash and loo. I don't dispute what Counselor Morocco or Counselor Wing is saying about increasing the amount of parkland. I'm not sure whether the two things are synonymous. If we, you know, if the Ministry of Natural Resources, and we don't know yet, identifies a bigger part of that hedgerow that was referred to by Mr. Lustig as being an area to be protected, whether that's open playing area because of what it's supposed to be as regeneration for greenbrier, it might not be...
Most of the time, it's not, you're not allowed to go in there and use it as parkland. I guess my next question, through your merit, is then, what is the cost we put in to take? What's the city going to get back at 5%? So what are we going to get in 5% that these kids aren't going to have a park? So what's the value to us in cash?
I don't know that would have to be supplied to us. It's the value of the land the day before draft approval, so if today's draft approval, it's the worth of that land yesterday times 5%. So if the developer paid, you know, $100,000 per acre, and there are, what is it, 56 acres out there, we're going to get 5% of that.
That's a pretty big chunk of land, 55 acres, and then not have a designated park area for children in that community, especially when you're looking at a condominium you want to put in there and row townhouses. You know, I think it's important, and I just can't believe, and I never will support this government's, you know, green space intensification, because they just want to jam all these houses into a little piece of grass, and here these kids have a little piece of parcel of land. I think they at least need to have some parkland that's designated in their area, you know, to give them something to do. Let's not forget, we don't want these kids in jail, we want to give them something recreational, and this is part of a recreational facility.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other comments? Yes, Counselor May?
I just have one question. Just want to know through you to Mr. Erlevich, if he's comfortable with us taking out Number 33.
Absolutely not. We put it in there. This council is obligated under the Planning Act to implement the provincial policies. Provincial policy is to protect threatened species. The Ministry of Natural Resources is yet to study and identify it. This developer came in in January and asked, could we move this forward, telling us that the ministry would be out there in March or April to determine the exact boundaries. We're standing here today and saying, the ministry hasn't been out yet, or to the best of their knowledge, they don't know whether they've been out. We have no idea what land should be protected. And therefore, we were being very flexible in terms of saying, we're willing to move ahead with approval of this, but in the event the ministry says they need more land than Ms. Campbell has identified, and I don't dispute Ms. Campbell's qualifications at all, but in the event that the ministry says there should be more land, we're saying, you don't even have to come back to this council to change it, it can be by red line revision. We'll just mark a bigger block on there, and that's the plan that now is draft approved. So we've given them actually a fair amount of flexibility. We have an obligation to fulfill the provincial requirements. I, as a professional planner in this province, am obligated to fulfill the public good. The public good is what the province has identified as being important, and it's... The public good is what the province has identified as being important and it's a threatened species.
Okay, when you say a threatened species, it was also referred to earlier as a weed.
Well.
Is this not correct? Now, if we put a development in there.
Ms. Campbell was running fast and loose with her words. She said it's a weed in the United States, but it happens to be a very rare species. She pointed out there are only three places in Ontario where it's found. So it's a rare species, it's threatened, we're reducing its habitat. I think until the ministry tells me otherwise, I need the condition in there and I'm hoping that council will support staff on that.
The other thing is, though, the developer also said that they'd be willing to deal with the ministry if that comes up, so it's kind of a saw-off, isn't it?
Well, that's what we were trying to do with Condition 33 was to say, if the ministry identifies something bigger, we'll incorporate that through red line revision. If they don't, then, you know, the area that's protected in the plan to date is the area that's protected. So I, I think they got the best of both worlds with that condition.
Yeah, well, the heat would be on the ministry anyway if we took it off, is that not correct? So, so there'd be no, you know, if we, if we left it out, the ministry, at their whim, they could come along and say, hey, you can't do that, correct?
I guess that's like kind of hoping one of the parents catches up with the kid who's doing wrong.
Well, thank you very much. The other thing is, too, just roughly at the, if you're saying 56 acres, 100,000 acre, that's $280,000 in the money in lieu, we could use that, too. So I have no problem with that.
Okay, we have councillor Ianone, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to highlight Mr. Lustig's point. They've waited and waited and waited for the MNR. They haven't come down, they haven't, they haven't rendered anything to them. If they don't like it, they're going to take the developer to the OMB. They're put, basically what they're saying is, I'm asking for approval, if they don't like it, we're pushing their hand to say, no, you can't do it. If it, if it's, if the MNR is so concerned about it, they're going to file to the OMB. That's all.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Well, that's basically my comment. Taking out 33 seemed to get Mr. Lustig a little emotional and upset. I think maybe he's upset from the last application, but anyway, they still have to approve it. They still have the opportunity to come back and make their comments. If they come back and they make a change, if they want to get approval, they're going to have to abide by what they have to say. So it's in or out, in my opinion, really doesn't make any difference. If they want approval of the development, they have to have regard for the, for the requirements.
Councillor Kary?
I agree with councillor Thompson. Put the heat back on the ministry, let them come forward if they want to make the changes. And I also agree with councillor Mayes, we could use the 5% money. We've got enough parkland. If you look through the list of our parks, we're park poor. And it's a bit of an embarrassment at some of our parks, we don't have enough money to fix the equipment or put things in that people want to use in our parks. Where are we going to get this money? We'll take this 5% and improve some of the parks that we have. I think that's what the Recreation Department's thinking about when they say we could use the money, they want to improve some of the parks that we have.
Fair comment. Councillor Peter Angel.
Hey, your worship, I agree. I think that at some point, you know, a developer has to be able to either develop its plan or not develop its plan. And if we sit here and we wait around for the MNR, then we're basically putting them in a stalemate position that no one can move until we wait for the MNR. If we move ahead with the recommendation that's on the floor, then at least the MNR will either have to do something about it or not do something about it. And as the solicitor already said, your worship, I mean, the provincial body has already been pinned down, they've already sterilized or declared over one-third of all the lands that they have was environmentally protected. So I think the developer's done a good job of listening to them so far.
Okay, fair enough. All right, we have the motion on the floor to approve the recommendation removing section or requirement 33. All those, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Hrlavich?
Excuse me, your worship, and we should take out then from Condition 1 after the word's widening or as modified by Conti- Condition 32. Should have said 33 in any event, but that portion of the phrase would have to come out.
Okay, after the word widen?
Yeah, the very end of Condition 1.
Okay, oh.
Your worship, I think this solicitor was asking for the deletion of 33 and any reference to it as well, so.
Okay, so that's acceptable, mover and the seconder? Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, three opposed. All right, it passes. Thank you. Oh, yeah, do you have Jean's map? Victor? Councillor Peter Angel, do you have a? She would like it back. Okay, the next order of business is telecommunication facility consultation and we would ask the clerk to speak to this matter, please.
Your worship, this is, is not a meeting under the Planning Act like the previous two. However, there's been substantial public interest in it and the agent for the applicant also wanted to make a presentation, so we felt it was appropriate to treat it like we treat planning items. So we would ask that you canvass the room to see if there's anybody here after the planner does a brief presentation, they can speak to it, and then the, the agent for the applicant will do a presentation as well.
Okay, fair enough. Is there anybody here in the room?
I'll ask Alex.
Okay, and just before we started, is there anybody here in the room for the telecommunications tower application? Yes, sir? Okay, we do have your proponent? Okay, and any residents, sir? Are you a resident for that? Okay, great. Right, Mr. Hrlavich, if you could please do your presentation.
Okay, yeah, thank you, your worship. This proposal is for a 195-foot telecommunication tower that would actually be located on the, between Lyons Creek Road and Schistler Road on the west side of the hydro, or the rail corridor. The, it's quite near the bounty line with Welland, the bounty of Welland is the yellow dash line. So this is Welland, this is Niagara Falls Welland, this is recognized as a hamlet within the region's policy plan. And there are a number of rural residential lots along this area, which is probably the, represented by the people in the audience today. The, the city in this case is a commenting agency to Industry Canada on telecommunication towers, they're not the approval authority. The, and therefore, but we do have a policy in the municipality that basically requires that there be a public meeting held by any proponent of a telecommunication tower and to submit the minutes of those meetings. And that's attached to this report, they're actually fairly lengthy documents. The, and they basically, we request that the proponent demonstrate how they intend to address the residents' concerns. The residents are concerned about height, here's the specific location, so in actual fact, the telecomain, communication tower is in the center of a compound, there would be a building for the equipment itself. This angled line is actually the driveway that would be coming in to service that. These are, it's actually a farmer's field. This is a provincially significant water course and we're required to keep a specific distance from that water course with respect to the driveway. The proponents submitted illustrations of what that tower would look like in the, in this field. And this is from the overpass on Schistler Road as you go over the railway tracks looking south into the property. And then again, from the opposite side of the overpass, Schistler Road, looking back towards it. The, so the, in this particular case, the city has a policy that supports grouping of telecommunication receivers and transmitters onto common towers. And so in this case, there's a tower that's one and a quarter kilometers from this site, so we're suggesting that this, the telecommunication receiver actually be located on that tower rather than this particular tower and rather than erecting a new tower, go with the existing tower. And that would be the recommendation back to Industry Canada that we don't support the tower in this location and because we didn't have any information to suggest that the alternative would, would not work. And so we're presenting that to council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hrlavich. Are there any questions? Are there any questions of Mr. Hrlavich? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion if we had anything from, yes, councillor Thompson?
People were going to speak to this issue?
Are we going to treat it as a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then we will, okay.
I, I, I can make a motion for denial right now versus support the report, but there's Mr. Lucas and other people have put a great deal of time and effort into this and have been to numerous meetings, including one with the federal Member of Parliament. I think the whole idea of how these issues are handled is flawed. I think this is unique, that we're having this type of opportunity. And I thank the planning people for giving the people the opportunity to have their say and I would like to hear what they have to say before I make a motion.
Sure. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the tower, first of all? Is anybody, other than the proponents? Yeah, okay. So the residents, we understand, we've got your emails and your calls, your concerns, we know that you're opposed to it. So why don't we hear from the proponent? We can have you come up here, make a presentation and then we can, we can deal with it. Should be on still.
Should be on, yes.
Yep.
Members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tony Bigliari and I'm the planning consultant. I represent SBA, SBA Canada, excuse me. SBA Canada builds communication towers and they lease the space up top for cell phone users, for municipalities, for broadcasters. And they're essentially a company that builds towers for four users as opposed to one user or two, they have four users on the top, as we've discussed and you have in your protocol here today. The main anchor for this tower is Wind. I just pressed the button, right? There we go. As Alex mentioned, the proposed communication tower is located at 9711 Lyons Creek. It's at the, it's, we've already gone through the, the location, I'm sure everyone's familiar with it and I won't bother you with the, with that. Now, what I did want to make a comment on is the site selection process that Wind and SBA look at. And part of the objectives of their work when we look at these is they look at the radio frequency characteristics of an area, they look at the terrain, they look at the contours, they look at existing structures, they look at the number of subscribers, the distance of existing sites, because they do correlate on other towers as well, because that's one of the things that they do do. And they, again, look at trying to maximize distances from residential communities and houses. As you can see, this is the locations, this is the ortho of the site, it's located here and there's one house within 120 meters and there's two houses, I think, at 180 and you can see how they're scattered. There's a very large ridge, as everyone knows, along here, that's about 40, 30, 40 feet in height along here for that location that we've looked at. Excuse me. The public consultation was done through the city of Niagara Falls, through their public consultation. And again, we tried to, when we say we, Wind with SBA, try to maximize the distance of the, of the location, again, putting it in the sort of the middle and eastern side of that, of that property that is there. We understand that there is a small hamlet, small rural hamlet within 1.4 kilometers of the, of the subject site located here in Welland. And again, one of the things that they tried to look at is moving it as far away as they can from this while maintaining the integrity of the radio frequency for the cell phone tower use. Went through the, the actual site plan, this is, the distance for this road access here is about 45 meters, what is required is 30, but we stretched it out a bit further for the location of the tower, which is located here on the subject site. And these four little squares in here, there'll be one square at this point because that's Wind will be the one, and then there's opportunity for three others to co-locate in this location. This is what the proposed tower, one of the proposed towers we're looking at here is the lattice-type structure. There is other types of structures that we have, which is a monopole as well, but in this case, we're, we're proposing this, it is something that can be looked at if this was successful, we move forward, working with city staff. There is an opportunity to, to look at that as well. The other question, there was questions about whether there'd be the flashing light here on the top. That's something we can't dictate at all, but we did speak with Transport Canada and they have indicated to us that there will be no flashing light at the top of this. The other aspect here is the, the tower, as you saw before, where we superimposed the lattice type. I do have copies of what the, the monopole, monopole is just a tubular, it looks like a flagpole, straight up and down and it's white in, in color and in nature that we compose. The other aspect is, on several of these that we do propose, some of the municipalities request some type of landscaping around the bottom so you can't see the, the bottom part or the base of the, of the pole. And what I'm going to do, I've got a couple of handouts, but I will hand out, if I may, just, just hand out here a few. This is what the monopole, which is something else that can be looked at for this proposal. Spoke with our client. In this location, as you can see in the drawing that you all have, it's a singular pole, it's white in nature and it's solid and tubular in, in size. And that's something else, and again, if it was to move forward, we'd be speaking with staff in terms of landscaping sort of the bottom half here of the, of the site. Now, in the two comments that, we read the report on Thursday, Friday, when we did receive it, and based on the, the two comments they did talk about, there was a discussion of trying to co-locate, in our view, of this FM tower that's located. This is our proposal, this yellow one down in here, what we're proposing, it's about 1.6 kilometers away. And this is what we refer to as a nominal point. And that's the point where SBA and Wind say this is the most appropriate location. And then within a one kilometer radius, they have agents that go out and try to find someone that will lease the land to them. This is where they, the gentleman that they talked to and they were able to lease the land. So that's the nominal point, which is the best. Again, we spoke with the individuals at Wind and we talked to them about this and about that. They had indicated that they had looked at it and I have information from their engineer. They essentially do a report and I'd be up with you, they do a report. We don't get to see that report as a planning consultants, but they do their report, they do their review. When this report, we phoned our, our clients to get this information. So we have an actual excerpt from it that suggests that this tower, and I can read it for you, "The FM tower will not fulfill our coverage objective as locating equipment on this tower would leave a coverage gap hole to the east. As such, we are not able to provide seamless coverage as required by Industry Canada's mandate for our cell phone service." "The guide radio tower is structurally unsound and fragile and inadequate to meet our needs, which is the needs of Wind. After analyzing the structure, Wind support their antennas, their microwave dishes and modules and cables." They also made the comment that with the FM tower, they have a high output power level which is likely to cause interference with our service, causing poor service quality by our wireless service that they have. Wind does look at co-locating, not with just SBA, but with other users. They've done it throughout Canada as they're coming here into this country, but they had suggested they looked at this. I do have that report if, if you want to see it, it's a, it's a one page and I'll pass that out as well. Again, we are able to get this information. We asked that. We asked that, if they did an excerpt, we asked that, of course, signed by their supervisor. And again, planning staff hasn't seen this. Let me just hand it over. Sorry. And again, I reading the report. We're springing this forward now. We didn't realize these were the comments that they were bringing forward and we wanted to at least bring those forward here tonight with you, our two. The other issue is this. This is a propagation map without the proposed tower. This is the information that Wind has and that utilized, they utilize to see where their gaps are. And you can see by the red is where their, the highest level of information and, and radio frequencies is. This is where we're providing the proposed tower. When you put that in, all of a sudden, it starts to connect. And that's what they try to do in order that you're not driving, you miss your call, and then you're trying to move forward. So this is part of what they do in terms of their view and how they do it. And again, staff hasn't seen this information. We just got the information as we read the report and understood what some of their comments were. Again, trying to follow the procedures that, that the city of Niagara Falls has. This is where Wind looked at, at this and where the, the big, that's the tower right there. And there's some other towers in here as well to the, to the west. But it fills and it creates a connection throughout these parts in here. Still a small gap in here, but a gap there. In terms of, in terms of the, the presentation, working with staff, we've followed the city of Niagara Falls consultation process. We are aware now of the information that, that they were sort of requesting. We've now brought it forward and, and bringing it to them. Again, not the best way to do it through, through council here today with the recommendation that we like to have staff review this, this information that we have. The communication tower is within the standards of Industry Canada as they brought forward to us. Their safety code six, which is the safety procedures that is followed by Health Canada and any provider that puts a tower up. And actually, in this location, we have information, again, done by Wind, that would suggest that it actually exceeds safety code six in terms of the radio frequencies. And we follow the, the guidelines as brought forward with this. So at this point, based on some discussion, we would, we would like to be able to at least have this information, at least reviewed by planning staff, because those are the two points that were brought forward in the planning director's report. And we've brought further information forward, again, for them to review. We, we just ask that, have an opportunity to have staff review that aspect of it and bring this forward at a later date, I guess. Sooner than later is, is, and if it wants to be dealt with tonight, we're happy to work with you to, that it's dealt with this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? No? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll bring up some of the residents and
Thank you.
And we may have you up if you have, if we have any other questions that we need answered.
Thank you.
That's okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. We've got some residents I would like to address the council. Yep, sure. Could you just state your name and your address, please?
Hi, I'm Candace Paris and I live at 9636 Lyons Creek Road. If you saw where that driveway going out to the proposed tower is sighted, that would be directly across from our residence. So we're obviously very close to it. I have to say that some of the information that we have just heard is the first time we have, I have heard it. And I'm guessing that the other residents in the area will say the same. And I think that would really speak to, one of the points I've been making from the very beginning on this, is that this firm has failed to do due diligence in, in keeping the neighbors informed. The very first that we heard of it was when we heard about this public meeting and only three residents received notice of a public meeting. And we had not been approached prior to that, that there was even being considered, that did we have any concerns or, so now again, even tonight, as we're asking council to support us in our opposition to the sighting of the tower there, we're hearing new information. And, and that's very disturbing to me. I would say that the staff have done a very good job of preparing the issue analysis of the points that, that have been made by the local residents, so, so we're, thank you for that. Again, I would just like to say that the residents have suggested that there might have been alternate sites. And we were told that those sites were not even going to be considered. And so we didn't know it, perhaps another site that was better wooded might also serve their purpose, but apparently that was not to be considered. The other information we had is that SBA is an American firm that is moving into Canada to, to install these communication towers. And this may be the first one, to our knowledge, it's the first one in Niagara. Because we're so close to the Welland boundary, we wondered if that was why the existing tower wasn't really considered, because really, it's just the next concession rode over. We sit just within the Niagara Falls boundary. So we were concerned that maybe precedent is being set if, if a firm is planning on putting these telecommunication towers up. If they're not notifying residents appropriately, if they're springing information on them at zero hour, and is this the way it's going to be as they obviously will want to put up more towers as their, as their business expands? Now clearly, we're, we're in a new age. We all have our cellphones. We know these things exist. But nevertheless, I think there has to be public consultation. When we look at, we sat through all the presentations tonight and we saw the, the city people and then we saw the suburban people, and now you're seeing a smaller number of rural people. And so even though we are small in number, we are also very concerned about what's happening in our neighborhood. And so we would really urge council to support staff's recommendation that the proposal, this proposed sighting not be supported and that that information go forward to Industry Canada for their ongoing consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else I would like to, yeah, sure, come on up?
Mayor, excuse me, mayor and council, I thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Bob Lucas. I live on 1208 McKenney Road. I know that the city of Niagara Falls has a design guideline. I just want to reiterate, which I know you don't want to hear anymore, some real quick points. It says that the facility should be built residential structure areas, zoned, or designated for future residential uses. The response that the Bigliari group gave to us in our three response questionnaires is that the location is several kilometers from the nearest settlement area. Now, Cooks Mills has to be classified as a settlement area and we are not several, several kilometers away from this tower. One that really struck me was that the tower should be unobstructive as possible and take advantage of elevations, topography, and existing vegetation. Their response was that the tower will be largely surrounded by existing trees as well as dense wooded area. I'm sure you can flip back to the pictures where they show you from not only the overpass, but the existing fields. There is no dense wooded area. It's 195 feet tall. It's in my backyard. 20 years ago, we built a custom home. So did many of the neighbors. If I'm to head towards where I'm heading, it's definitely devaluation of the property. Their response to that was that they said, "It is our understanding that there has been no proof that communication towers affect property values." My question is, if today or one year from now, the proof does come forward, who will compensate the entire neighborhood for their devaluation of properties? One that I really liked, I'm not too sure on how the gentleman spoke and said that it would be a single structure. To our understanding, the blueprints that were given to us were a lattice-type, three-tier tower. Says that the color of the tower should blend in and reflect the surrounding area. The Bigliari's response is that the light gray color is unobstructive, unobtrusive, I apologize, and will blend in particularly well with overcast skies and snow-covered fields. Now, for 12 months, I don't believe there's that much overcast skies and, like, snow-covered fields. I mean, a lot of the answers and questions, I don't want to read them anymore. I do believe yous have covered them. I do believe the council is, is against what's proposed. And speaking to Kim Crater's office, I do believe it'll sum it all up. Basically, the jurisdiction of the federal government in section five of the Radio Communication Act is that the province has no jurisdiction at any level in this discussion. Concerned community members need to talk to their local federal members of parliament, the Honorable Rob Nicholson. We did have a meeting with Stuart Graham. Wayne Thompson was in on it. We did voice our concern, so I don't want to reiterate all of them. I just know I have more to add to this and I don't want to reiterate because I do believe they've all been covered already. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay. All right. So back to the council. Councillor Thompson, councillor Morocco.
Yes, thank you for giving the opportunity for this to be aired. I really honestly believe that this whole issue was thought by the applicant or the people involved was going to be handled very quickly and smoothly without anybody knowing about it. There were all kinds of errors made in the dates of advertising and getting the notices out to the people. There was actually an indication that the tower was to be located in the city of Welland rather than Niagara Falls. You can tell by some of the responses that they were really not trying to work with the people, but just trying to look after their responsibility and providing some kind of an answer, hoping that it wasn't going to come back, there wasn't going to be an opportunity for this kind of discussion and dialogue. These people at the meeting at Mr. Nicholson's office, there are about 25 of them, and this is in a rural area, which demonstrates that this is a concern of the people in the area. They don't think they were treated fairly and equitably and they didn't get the responses. I'm hearing new information tonight as we speak and I think that's unfair and I think the recommendations made by staff that indicate that this is inappropriate for that location and does have an impact on the residents is appropriate and I would move that motion and also indicate to the government that the process with respect to this needs to be changed. There has to be an opportunity for more serious local input. Even when the provincial member, Kim Crater, was approached, he just said, "Nothing we can do about it." And even initially, the federal member didn't have any idea what to do about this or what the jurisdiction was. So this is new ground that we're going through and I think that people have to take this a little more seriously because they affect people's livelihood and particularly their homes. So I would so move the motion.
Here we have a motion by councillor Thompson, second by councillor Wing. Councillor Morocco?
Yes, your worship, just, and I'm not going to repeat what councillor Thompson said, but I support the recommendation of staff on this one. And it's quite ironic, as Ms. Paris pointed out, you know, we've got a communication tower, but there was a lack of communication or the lack of getting the communication out. So I have to say that to be fact, big or small, I do support the residents that are here and also the recommendations by staff, so I'll support the motion.
Thank you. That was a good comment, too. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship, and I'll definitely support the recommendation that's on the floor. The only comment I wanted to make, and I'm not sure whether or not the federal government or any level of government has thought about it, but we do have hydro corridors that go all, like, all throughout the whole province that already have pretty much unsightly large towers on them. And I don't understand why they can't incorporate a communications tower in with the hydro towers since they're already of significant height. So perhaps we can pass that on as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. Councillor Cario?
The only other thing I'd like to add, your worship, is the circulation distance is not adequate. This can be seen for I don't know how far, but three times the height of the tower, 600 feet. So we only had to notify people within 600 feet. Doesn't seem to me like that's adequate.
Have to agree with that. Okay. We have the motion on the floor. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. What a night. We're getting a lot of attention tonight. This is great. Make us feel good. Thank you very much.
Applause meter.
Yeah, applause meter. I'm going to bring one in. Okay. Next up, we have the mayor's reports and announcements. First off, I regret to announce the following notes of sympathy. Our thoughts, our thoughts go out to the family of Bill Graham, who is retired commissioner with the city of Niagara Falls, who recently passed away. And as well, the councillor Peter Angelo and his family on the passing of his aunt, Sharina Palumbo. Our prayers are with you and your families during this time. In recent events, Scotia Bank Convention Center opened to an awful lot of fanfare, a lot of excitement from the ribbon cutting right through to the gala event and of course, the very first convention, the Home and Garden Convention, which was absolutely over the top successful. There was no parking anywhere to be found. People had just a wonderful time there. Congratulations to Kerry Painter, to the entire board and everyone involved. It was fantastic and everyone in the region was talking about us without a doubt. When I was at the regional meeting, they were just so proud of the way Niagara Falls handled themselves, the top drawer entertainment. They, we were certainly the talk of the region. We had a regional delegation this past week, meet with the Minister of Health, Deb Matthews, myself, Chair Gary Burrows, Mayor Doug Martin of Fort Erie, Mayor Vance Battaway of Port Colborne, and councillor Frank Campion of Welland, went together and along, met with MPP Kim Crater. And we thank him for his efforts for putting this meeting together. We had one solid hour to make our point very clear. We stayed on message and the message was simply that we need an independent review slash investigation of the hospital improvement plan. And the part of the message that seems to have not been getting through is there's talk of how many reviews do you need, how many investigations do you need? There has never been one yet since the implementation of the hospital improvement plan. So there's been a lot of efforts here at this council as well, and you'd be happy to know that she heard us loud and clear. We, we were very straight with our message. We were non-negotiable and we're waiting to hear back from her. So at first she seemed, we wanted to know what the issue was, what the holdup was, what the downside was. And she said it was an unusual request, which to us seemed unusual. We said, "You don't review programs before they finish? You wait until they finish to look back and realize it was a failure? You review it partway through." We said, "We're halfway through. Now is the time to review it." So we certainly had her attention and, and again, thank you to MPP Crater for putting this meeting together. Volunteer appreciation in our community. We've had an awful lot of volunteer recognition from our Coronation Centre to, for Alex Tavern. We had a lot of opportunity. Our CAO was there to join me at both of these, as well as some other staff. We have a lot of great volunteers in this community and you'd be happy to know they're, they're doing well and we're recognizing them for their efforts. Upcoming events, Arbor Day, April 29th at Mitchelson Park, starts at 9:00 AM. There'll be tree planting by Park in the City and as well as the mayor's youth advisory committee and students from each of the high schools. This is supported by the Niagara Falls Horticultural Society and it's sponsored by Tim Hortons and Zappi's Pizza. The Stanford Center Volunteer Firefighters Association has their annual egg hunt this Friday. Takes place at Fireman's Park, starts at 10:00 AM with Easter egg hunt happening from 11 o'clock until 1 o'clock. And let's hope for some good weather. The mayor's youth advisory committee has their annual Battle of the Bands. It's going to be Thursday, April the 28th, 28th at Optimist Club. All students are from the area high schools and everyone is invited to attend. I'm having a hard time talking tonight. Tickets are available at each of the five high schools or from the MIAC members and as well will be on sale at the door. The event, the event begins at 7:00 AM, or PM, rather, and again, Thursday, April the 28th. Yes, I just, the words are not coming out tonight. I don't know what it is. And lastly, lastly, Niagara Falls Giants Baseball Club is looking for billets. After an absence of more than 10 years in the greater Niagara region, they're proud to be starting up again. They're looking for billet families for players from May through to August. The young men on the team are from 16 to 18 years of age. They're looking for support and would appreciate any interested parties. If you do have interest, you just have to go to the website, which is nfgiants.com. And that concludes the comments for tonight. Now on to communications and comments of the city clerk. First off, we have the Winter Festival of Lights and I believe we, we do have representative here. We're requesting a grant equal to the waiver of fees related to the Gale Center and shuttle service. Mr. Fazio, would you like to step up and give an overview?
If you'd like me to speak tonight, sure. Your worship, your worship and city councillors, I appreciate the opportunity. To be very brief, you have the correspondence in front of you. Basically, we're working with the Canadian Veterans Advocacy Group on bringing our, the first annual, or I shouldn't say first annual, the first ever first annual, or shouldn't say first annual, the first ever Canadian Veterans National Run-Even Event to Niagara Falls, July 8th to 10th. Basically, in a nutshell, it's a celebration of the troops coming home from combat operations in Afghanistan, so it's an opportunity to celebrate their return home, and of course, also celebrate and honor those who have fought in wars for the past 60, 70 years, and not just wars, but in peacekeeping missions like Yugoslavia and so on as well. So in regards to our requests, we are asking for the waiving of fees for the use of the Gale Center on Saturday, July 9th, and also asking that we can meet with Niagara Transit officials as we will require transportation shuttle service to the arena, as the majority of the arena's parking lot will be utilized for children's activities, static displays of military vehicles. We're going to have marching bands, official ceremonies. We've already got Deputy Minister from the Department of Veterans Affairs, who will be coming, also Representative to the Department of National Defense. Obviously, with the election being called, we haven't been able to confirm other politicians at this time, but we are looking again for the waiver of fees for the Gale Center for that day, and also we will need some support with regards to utilization transportation services, both for the general public to get to the event. And I should say that we are looking at between 5,000 and 10,000 people that will be in town for that weekend, so we'll have a significant economic impact locally. As well, we will have a use for specialized transportation vehicles, i.e. those for those who are disabled, obviously. So I'll leave it at that, certainly if there's any questions of any member of council. And I would like to say, there were, there were a few others that were here tonight, but having gotten here a little earlier, they just couldn't, they couldn't wait around for three hours, so my apologies.
Some of our veteran, some of our veteran members. Anyway, we've got the request on the floor here. Do we have any questions of Mr. Fazio of the council? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
I have one question, Your Worship, to yourself, to Mr. Fazio. In your letter, you wrote that in the memorial room, a series of book readings and autograph signings featuring Generals Hillier, LeBlanc, and Delair, to be confirmed or being arranged. Do you mean only Delair is to be confirmed, or all three?
All three we are in discussions with. We have, we're speaking with all three generals.
Okay. So it seems like a nice way to honor our military veterans, and at the same time, it's a great opportunity for the city of Niagara Falls. We're going to have people, I understand, coming from all over North America for this event. Are there any other questions for Mr. Fazio? No. Okay, do we, do we have a motion? Yes, Counselor Wing?
I have a question for staff, actually. In the memo from the clerks department, it's pointed out that the cost of the request is $9,016 plus shuttle costs yet to be determined, so we're looking at over $10,000 that we're being asked to waive, and we have a fund for such expenditures, which totals for this year 8,000. And we've already spent close to a quarter of that.
About that, yeah, I think so.
So it looks to me like we're coming, you know, we realize this is a worthy endeavor, but we're going to the cupboard, and the cupboard is bare, relatively bare. I'm thinking, you know, with the economic impact that's stated here, probably the best way to go would be to refer this to the tourism area, BIAs, and ask if they'd be willing to support it, because, you know, we can all find, you know, the sort of thing we do with this is not something very grand like this is. It's, you know, things like what we've done already, the Strikehold Violence Tournament, the War for Kids' Sake, you know, that sort of thing. It's the smaller, really, community of the events for locals, by locals, you know, and this is something that needs to be supported. I'm just not sure this is the poise to come to for that support, because first of all, we don't have the funds.
Okay, okay, fair comment. Okay, Counselor Morocco, Counselor Iannone?
Yes, Your Worship. Thank you, Dino, for bringing this forward. I think it's a great opportunity, and I do sit on the Winter Festival Lights Board, but I have to say, I know that we just finished doing budgeting and talking about cutting. Is it possible maybe we can eliminate if the buses are going to come in too high? Or that 9,000 is actually, I lost somebody. The, the cost of just offsetting the Gale Center is just $9,000 alone to the city?
Yeah, that does not include, that's, the buses would be on top of that.
And so as Janice always said, that our budget for doing this is already kind of exhausted, and this is a Winter Festival Lights event, so out of the Winter Festival Lights budget, I guess, Dino, I have people probably asking, and I'm going to ask a question because this is their question, is there's no funds to cover that cost for busing?
We do have, in the budget, we do have some dollars available for busing. We don't know at this point what those dollars will be in terms of, because we want to sit down with, with transportation officials and see what that cost will be. So with regards to transportation, we do feel that at very least we'll be able to cover any costs that the city has with regards to actual hard costs that the city have for transportation.
And if you weren't able to get the Gale Center, is there an alternative venue that you could use to host the veteran service that you're looking at doing?
Not that we can foresee in Niagara Falls, no. So we'd be losing about a million dollars in economic impact of visitors.
Just a couple of questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've got Counselor Morocco, I'm sorry, Iannone, and then Peter Angelo. Got you in there, and then Thompson, I had him earlier and I forgot him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little, I'm a little confused, because I'm sure Mr. Fazio sat in the audience when we said no new grants. I think he sat in the audience when we took out the new grant request that came before us, because we said we were not entertaining new grants. And while it's a very worthwhile cause, and we all did the letters for veterans, we are all supportive of our veterans, particularly those fighting now in Afghanistan, if you can't afford to host an event, don't host it, because we give the Festival of Lights a lot of money. If you can't host an event, don't hold it.
Well, just for clarification, the way this came, it came through the mayor's office, and I was the one that referred them to the Festival of Lights, because it looked like it was a good opportunity for the city, and that's how it happened. So it just turns out it's landed on Mr. Fazio's lap because of the mayor's office?
But I would say so was the marathon that brings thousands of people through that we turned back. There were a number of new requests that we turned back, though we did give the Festival of Lights a large sum of money. I'm just saying, we said no new grants. Either we're not doing new grants, or we need a new budget to allocate the new grant requests that are coming in.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I guess just through you to probably Mr. Arfida. In the report that you gave us here, I guess the $8,000, that's not just hard costs, but you include in-kind services as well? Because, I mean, as I look at this, I would say that the waiver of ice fees, we didn't actually take in $825, so did we send $825 over to Parks and Rec in lieu of the ice fees? Or are those just in-kind services?
I'll answer that, yes. When you waive fees, there's a revenue that's offset in the parks and area in the arena. The $825 of ice is something that we have to forego, so in essence, we use the, we expense the grant that you provide in that line item for the $8,000 and offset the revenue in the arena, because there is a cost that we are foregoing of having the ice available, because we could have sold that ice at that time. So that's why we do it like that.
Okay, so then council would have to approve going over the $8,000 mark in this account if we were going to, if we were going to consider something like this?
Yes, council would have to increase that, that line item for whatever you deemed that you wanted to spend in this event.
Okay, now, next question is, what if the ice isn't rented? Do we still have to send that money over?
No, in that particular case, I believe that the, the ice time that was, that was used for that event, it was booked previously, so it was foregone. Certainly, if a group wanted to rent the ice in a non-peak time, we wouldn't normally do that, but in this particular case, the ice that was rented was in a peak time, we foregone, we foregone, forego, it's getting late, we, we didn't, we didn't charge anybody for the ice.
I understand. Okay, I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, then, to Mrs. Mildenhauer. Is the ice rented? Like, is it all booked up in July?
At this point in time, the ice is not rented that weekend. We do have, however, have costs to put the floor in and take it out, because of course we do have ice at that time in all four pads. So if you do look at the breakdown of the cost, that would be the floor fees, the $3,390.
Okay, what about the cost for the memorial room? Is that for staff?
That is our standard rental fee for the use of that room, and at present time, we don't have any bookings other than tentative for this event for that room.
Okay. Another question I have is, because the Festival of Lights is a nonprofit, a not-for-profit organization, would they be allowed to make an application through a sports tourism grant?
Under the sports tourism grant, one of the conditions we have is that it should qualify to be a two-day event. I know that this event does take place over the weekend, so we could consider looking at that as well.
And then, according to our sports tourism policy, what type of rebate would the Winter Festival of Lights be able to receive?
It would be looking at the number of rooms that they have booked, the participants coming to this weekend over the two-day event. So that would range, I think our minimum was $300 up to $4,000.
Okay, and just to reiterate then, at this point, pad one and pad three are not rented?
Correct. We do have rentals right now on the other two pads, but not on those two.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gates?
Thanks very much. First of all, Jim, I think, Counselor, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll sit down.
Do you mind? Counselor Thompson?
Not a problem, go ahead.
Go ahead, you're up.
Sorry.
I think this is something that you got a call, I got a call from the initial organizer who was representing the veterans, and I referred them to the staff at Niagara Falls Tourism, and they've been working directly with them here. So you're listening to, the ice isn't rented at this time, so if there's no ice rented, then we're really not losing any revenue. I think the key area of the presentation that was made to me was, this is an opportunity to bring the veterans here to honor them for their service overseas in all the wars, not just Afghanistan. So that's a pretty hard one to, to suggest that we're not interested in pursuing this. The other thing that I am suggesting that we determine, and I don't know what the split would be, that we make a request to Niagara Falls Tourism, because they're certainly going to benefit by the rooms, and hopefully it's as successful as the initial promoter suggests and what Dino thinks may happen as a result. We all could be wrong, but I think it's worth investigating, and maybe if there is a motion that we try to split through a grant through the ice rental and also through support from Niagara Falls Tourism. And I think I had $600 or $700 left over from my election campaign. Maybe we could kick that into the, to the parcel to help offset at the same time. So a suggestion, but I think every time I hear the word veterans and coming to the community, I think that's extremely worthwhile, so hopefully we can have a positive recommendation here, and I will do what I can through the tourism board to try to see if we can offset some of the costs.
So what you're saying is, pad one and three currently are not rented, so that's 5,400 bucks, you know, of this 9,000 that Counselor Peter Angelo drew attention to. Secondly, we're suggesting that with the tourism, sport tourism, if we took that approach, that's up to $4,000 that is sitting there, and then we also have money that's available in our, our council fund, partially, so I mean, between that and Niagara Falls Tourism and Counselor Thompson's leftover election money, you know, we should be able to piecemeal together enough money to bring them.
We'll see if we can get $2,000 out of Niagara Falls Tourism as well.
So now how can we encapsulate this into a motion, Mr. Clerk?
That's what I'm.
I would refer to staff. I would, I would refer it to, as Counselor Gates says to Jim, he puts everything together, makes it all happen and all work with you on the tourism side.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Brother Gates, did you want to say something?
Yes, Mayor, you did. Yeah, I, first of all, I think Counselor Thompson's on the money on this. Our vets have spent 10 long years, I think the war now over there has been going on for a long, long time. I think I got the same calls as you did today to support this. I guess, I guess if there's anything that the community can get behind, not just particularly this city council, but sponsorships, the federal government is our veterans. And so I guess, Dino, what I'm trying to ask, have you looked at other sponsorships? Have you gone to Rob Nicholson, our MP for the area, and talked to him? Because I really believe that they would show their support and their weight behind something like this, particularly with the significance of it being veterans. So just a couple of suggestions as well.
Yeah, no, we certainly, and I appreciate the question. We are definitely looking at a variety of revenue sources, certainly sponsorship being one of them. Have not met personally yet with Rob Nicholson, obviously because of the election, he doesn't have, so to speak, the authority at this point, but that certainly is on, on our to-do list. We have met with our Member of Provincial Parliament as well. We are actively going after sponsors. We also expect to generate revenues from food and beverage, from, I guess, the sponsorship, from, from vendors as well that will sell space to as well. So we are looking at, at the very least, breaking even, if not making a few dollars for the event, which would then be turned over to the Canadian Veterans Advocacy Group and their Pennies for Veterans campaign in their, in their quest to continue to support veterans across the country. But we are looking at all those avenues.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Fazio. Okay, next up, we've got Enbridge Ride to Conquer Cancer. They're asking for a grant equal to the cost of the building permit for tents for their event. Consideration of council? Counselor Thompson?
I move we dispense with fees for tents.
Okay. Are you a poet today?
Pardon me?
Dispense for tents?
No, it always blows me away when you get calls from people who are putting a tent up in the backyard for a wedding or something, and they have to get a building permit and pay a fee for it, that it's going to be there for a day or two days or something. It always concerns me, but in this particular case, I'll just waive the fee for the cancer.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, two opposed. Okay. Item three, St. Michael and St. Paul High School Relay for Life. We're requesting relief from the time provisions under the noise bylaw.
Who was opposed on the last one there?
Bart and Carolyn. Yeah. No, no, Bart and Carolyn.
Bart and Carolyn?
Bart and Carolyn, yeah. Recommendation for, for approval of councils, a recommendation, do you have a motion? Okay, moved by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. And then last item, Ontario Society, what are they called?
Sheraples.
Okay, they request the month of May be proclaimed Food Health Month. Moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? All right. Any additional items for council, Mr. Clerk?
None, Your Worship.
Thank you. Appointment Matters. We'll ask the clerk to start this off.
You've all been given your ballots, I guess, for citizen appointments. Some of you have already finished filling them out. One minor mistake I made, Tommy Nello is, put his name up for Recreation Committee. He's not going to come in there, no.
Okay, so we'll just take a few minutes if everyone wants to just fill in their, their ballots, make their selections. make their selections.
Mr. Mattson's adding up the tally, so I would suggest we move on to the, to the next report, which also includes, there's still a few unresolved appointments as far as council members. So I don't know if you want to just, if you have any questions regarding the report on external appointments, and then we can deal with the, where we've got some duplication.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I didn't get this until late on the weekend. Under the Niagara Falls Illumination Board, one plus the mayor, I put my name down for that simply because I've been working for a year or so with the former general manager at the Parks Commission, trying to see if there's an opportunity with a public-private partnership between the Illumination Board and the private sector to light up the falls. I think I spoke about that here at Council. Horseshoe Falls is very poorly lit. It has to be lit from behind the mist, and I put my name down because I thought that would be appropriate way to handle it. I didn't realize that Counselor Maves was already there, so I'd be happy to work with you and Counselor Maves to see if we could accomplish something in the next year or so with this, because I tell you, the look of the falls when it is lit from behind the mist is truly spectacular. It's why people come here, and we're really not taking advantage of that. And I think there's a real opportunity to showcase that with proper lighting. I saw it once when Greg Frueen was down there and had a special event that he was taping, and he lit behind the mist, and it was truly, truly outstanding. So I will remove my name from the Illumination Board, and hopefully we can work together.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, so on that one, Counselor Thompson removes his name on the Illumination Board. Are there any other ones, Mr. Clerk, that, should we go through them one at a time?
Yeah, I'll go through the ones that, I guess, still need to be resolved, one way or the other. With Park in the City Committee, you've got Counselor Peter Angelo and Counselor Gates who put their names forward. You'll recall last term, we did have two council reps on that committee with Counselor Wing and Counselor Peter Angelo. Obviously, with an advisory committee to council, you know, it's up to you as council members, if you both want to sit on that, that's fine, you just have to give me that indication.
Yes? Okay, good, so that one's done?
Seconder?
Do we have a seconders? Counselor Wing, second. All those in favor? Okay, that one's done?
Okay. We talked about the Illumination Board, so that's resolved itself. The Downtown BIA, you've got three names that have been put forward for that. There's been some discussion on that. The Downtown BIA's constitution says one council representative. The Municipal Act says that council can appoint directly one or more directors. So there, I know there was some discussion beforehand whether we could have more than one counselor on the Downtown BIA. It's possible, I guess, we could make that request to the downtown. I'm sure they wouldn't be opposed to it.
Counselor Thompson?
Well, I think that the mayor is ex officio on all committees, particularly where there is CIP funds or dollars coming from the municipality. So I think the mayor on that particular committee is an automatic, and then it's up to the council to determine. And I guess, in committee meeting, it was loud and clear who their representative they wanted to be, and either it's a vote, or, but I think you're on automatically. And I would suggest that, or, Clerk didn't look that part up in his...
No, I mean, he's not on automatically. There's nothing that says he's on automatically. Obviously, the mayor, you know, by virtue of his position is given deference, but there's nothing that says in either the Downtown BIA or the Municipal Act that the mayor's ex officio. So if he does go, and I assume he would like to attend, does he vote, does he not vote? Those issues aren't resolved.
I was here a lot longer than he was. And I was always told that the mayor was ex officio on every committee, and certainly had the right to express his opinion and vote. So that's my opinion, so...
Okay, we've got Counselor Peter Angelo?
I would put a motion on the floor that all three of you go sit on the BIA, but that none of you are entitled to a vote. That would be my motion.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Second by Counselor Gates. The motion was that... Three go on, and none of us vote. And we have a seconder. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Counselor Wing?
I just find the no voting a little bit odd. I voted both Lundy's Lane and Main and Fair.
Yep, Counselor Carrion?
Well, my feeling is that the council shouldn't have a vote on those committees unless they're putting in money.
That's right.
I mean, on the Falls VBI, glad to have the representation from council, but let them put their money up if they want to vote. If they're not putting any money in, take their vote away. We're not putting any money in the downtown...
Well, yes, we are.
Yes, you are.
The downtown, we are. But do you need a vote?
No, because they read my things here.
Yeah, it's got to come back to us anyways.
They read my things here by council.
Counselor Iannoni?
Generally, I do not vote at my committees. I don't. But their constitution has the member voting at their committee. I would just say, if a member of council, we're putting a lot of money downtown, a lot of money. I would say that if you're going to treat all the BIAs the same, that's fine. If the rest of councils do not vote at the other BIAs and that standard, I have no argument with that. I really don't. I think the more of us who are sitting there and learn what's going on, the better off we are. But do you take away all our votes? Because if we talked about weighing votes downstairs to the representation of money you invest, that would pretty much make us the biggest investor. So even compared to the Hatch Building, makes us...
Not to the Downtown, not to the BIA contribution. You're talking about the BIA contribution.
I'm talking about the ISF funds, beautification funds, and all...
That's not what this is.
Okay. Counselor Peter Angelo, then I got the clerk.
Your worship, I just want to say that any of the money that the city is proposing to spend or does spend, those decisions are made here. They're not made at the BIA level. So, I mean, any councilor here voting at a BIA is only voting on the funds that the BIA raises, which are not part of the city's funds. They're entirely separate. So I would picture the three representatives there to kind of help guide the BIA in how they want to proceed. But all the decisions that deal with funding are going to come back to the council, and are going to be made by the nine of us.
Good point.
There's no city funds that are going to be spent at the BIA level.
Well, that's a good point. Counselor Maves?
No, I'm just thinking back to the last term. I think we had a Downtown Steering Committee with four counselors and two alternatives, so I see no problem having three people representative on there. And also, the more the mayor, as far as sometimes people can't make the meetings, whatnot, we'll have representatives there, and I think that's good.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Did you have any other comment?
I think Counselor Peter Angelo sort of hit the nail on the head with that. I mean, BIAs aren't advisory boards to council. They don't bring their recommendations, other than the budget and the Board of Directors, to council for approval. But as Counselor Peter Angelo articulates correctly, I mean, the CIP decisions are made by this council.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Hands up, so I can see them, please. Opposed? Opposed? Okay, Counselor Wing is opposed. Okay.
And then the, the only other two, we've got Falls View BIA, Counselor Thompson and Counselor Morocco have put their names forward, and similarly Niagara Civic and Convention Center, Counselors Thompson and Counselor Morocco have put their names forward.
Okay, do we have, yeah, Counselor Iannoni?
Well, quite frankly, Counselor Thompson's been the rep on both those committees for the last number of years, and it hasn't been problematic. And he's, being the president of the BIA, I think it's probably a good synergy. So I would move Counselor Thompson retains both those positions.
Okay. Any other discuss, is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, Counselor Wing? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and it's passed. Mr. Clerk, is there any other items?
Just with regard to the covering report, which is different than the actual appointments, per se, I ask the council to consider the recommendation.
Regarding contractual arrangements?
Well, I tell you, read the report in great detail. I mean, basically, what it's saying is that, once again, if anybody on council wants to sit on an external body, they put their name forward, and that's happened this evening with Winter Festival of Lights and Niagara Falls Tourism especially. And that what we're saying in the second recommendation is that with our move towards a contractual arrangement with the fee-for-service groups, that will hopefully deal with the issue of there not being council representation on some of those external bodies. So the city's interest is still being protected through the contractual arrangement if there isn't a specific council representative on one of those external bodies.
So Lundy's Lane BIA might be one of those that were...
No, BIAs don't count towards that. What we're talking about is your project share, your Niagara Falls Humane Society, Winter Festival of Lights, Niagara Falls Tourism, Boys and Girls Club. I think that's all of them.
Okay, we have a vacancy on Lundy's Lane BIA. I don't know if, yes, Counselor?
Counselor Wing's going to take that.
Yeah, I was trying to cut down this term on the number of committees I sit on, but seeing as how there's been quite a turnover in the board, agreed to continue to help provide continuity between the old board and the incoming board.
Okay, do we need a motion for this then, or no? Okay, so Counselor Wing, you've got that one. Is there anyone else that would like, you know what, I need a motion to go beyond 11:00. Motion of Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Come on, hands up, good night. We're almost finished here. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, you guys, come on. All those in favor? No, because I get all these half hands, half hands. All those in favor of going beyond 11:00? Thank you. You guys, ay yi yada.
Get a motion to approve.
Okay, so then we'd like to have a motion to approve the appointments, please.
No, the report.
Of the report, rather, to move the report. Counselor Iannoni, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Oh, Counselor Peter Angelo, I'd like to call you up here. It looks like we are now on budget time.
At 11:00.
They'll still do them, the count will announce it afterwards.
They're still doing the, what's that?
Does it have to be handled tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Harrison, as far as the budget?
The staff report recommends there needs to be some adjustments with the consumption rates between the sewer fund and the water fund. We could defer the budget to the next meeting if, which is not unfortunately until the May 16th. However, we would have to just adjust the rates accordingly at that time if there was to be a minor adjustment. The rate increases that are recommended in the report are very minor, minimal. The only thing is, is the change between the water and the sewer rates have got to be adjusted to reflect the regional charges. But certainly, we could, we could come back in May with the, with the budget at that time.
Okay, what's the, yes, move to deferral. Counselor Iannoni, seconded by Counselor Carrion?
I was just asking if there's a lot on the agenda for May 2nd.
Okay, this is just another question to the motion for deferral. It's a question to the May 16th meeting?
Really, at this point in time, I have no idea. I guess I defer to Mr. Hrlavich if he has any idea. I think there, I think there was, when we checked about the May 2nd meeting, there was only one planning application that we had to contend with for May 16th. Is that correct, Al?
The, that'll be the official Plan Amendment 94, the growth plan policies, so...
Just a small one.
And the CAO mentions that we have capital budget as well? So we have capital, so we do have a couple of items. What's that?
So it's this we do with the budget?
Okay, so we're all in favor of that. Motion for deferral, all those in favor? Yeah, you know what, okay, Mr. Belo, pardon me? Opposed to the deferral? Okay, again, all those in favor of deferral, please, show, hands, one, two, three, four? Okay, opposed? You would? Okay, hold on a sec, someone's not voting, okay.
No, I switched. I just, I forgot Mr. Belowski said...
So... So you want to... Yeah, okay, okay. Well, are we going to make our decision based on what he wants? Why don't we just make the decision? I mean, do you want to have a meeting? Okay, here's the motion for deferral to the May meeting. All those in favor for deferral? One, two, three, four, opposed? One, two, three, four, and I'm opposed too, so let's deal with it. Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo, we'll take the... Just before we get into the budget discussion, we do have some... Just before we get into the budget discussion, we do have some, someone that's been waiting patiently all night, all the way down from Metris in Concord. So, why don't we get into the consent agenda and resolutions?
You have to pass the resolutions.
So, we've got a couple of resolutions here. Can we have a motion to Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Now, under the consent agenda, how do you want to handle the consent agenda? You want to do one at a time, or?
Move the consent agenda.
Okay, move the consent agenda by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Thank you very much. It's approved unanimously. Thank you for your patience. Counselor Peter Angelo, it's all yours.
Council will now consider report F 2011-12 dealing with the 2011 municipal utility budget. I know that we have Mr. Belowski that has waited quite a long time to address counsel. So, I'd ask Mr. Belowski to come up to the podium, please.
I need some help with this power pack. I'm getting, we own this, the 10 minutes. Somebody has to help me.
Should have told me you were bringing one of these beforehand.
Well, that's why I, I know.
Mr. Chairman, this is a rush job, so I have to apologize that I did not inform Dean because I did not have that CD ready till 20 to 6 today, this evening. Also, I've had a discussion with staff, and I would have voted for the deferral because a lot of the detail of this budget that we're talking about is things that most of it, staff has seen. So, Mr. Chairman, members of council, staff, I now will give you my quick presentation because this defer some errors in here. I apologize for them. Now, the question we have before us is this. Is a flat rate fair and equitable? And if we go to the next slide, I think that council will agree, remember, and I think our staff will agree that what we have here, the first report back in 95, it said a flat rate is not equitable and not fair. So, what we have in 2000, a flat rate was removed from the water. There's only one problem. Council was misled. Reports were doctored, and I can't go into the detail here, but that's all part of a report that I submitted in July 23, 2007. There were seven conclusions. They still all apply. But I was supposed to be given two hours to, staff were turned around to critique my report. They came back, and we had the meeting on September so I could rebut what staff had presented. We only had one problem. I was allocated two hours. However, that two hours turned down, and we didn't even get halfway through the first conclusion because I was filibustered by staff. And then the two hours went by, and what happened? Council had to go for dinner because they were going to a council meeting.
Mr. Belowski, I think that Mr. Iafida wants to comment.
Pardon? Okay.
For once and for all, Mr. Belowski, you were promised two hours, and I'm not sure what that's got to do with tonight's report. So, you only got 10 minutes. If you can stick, if you can stick to the pertinent parts of the report.
Just one second, my good man, because this is six hours of me, in essence, performing a forensic audit on what's happened with this rate structure. So, therefore, as I said, we should be deferring this, but we're not, we don't have to go on. Go on to the next slide. It's very simple. What this says is that the highest user in this city used 896,000 plus cubic meters, which is 15% more than a regional municipality, and paid the grand sum of service charge of That is equivalent to a minimum wage of an individual working for a year. That is fair and equitable. You say, what's wrong? I think that number speaks for itself. There were 57 high users going from inch and a half up that used over 3.5 million cubic meters of water, which is 27%, and paid the grand total of just under $400,000 on a service charge budget of $16,700,000. That is fair and equitable. The residential homeowners, those same people that came off that flat rate with water, used less than 43% of the water purchased and paid a grand total of 12, over $12 million, $12,800,000, I think that is. And you say that is fair and equitable. Now, we can move on to the next slide. What does it say? The people that we were going to turn around and have protect with this type of structure, get them out of the flat rate. Well, what happened with the flat rate? It was transferred to the service charge. And now, let's look at those people, the ones below 100. There are 5,700 residential householders that use under 100 cubic centimeters of water. Mathematics is clear. They paid over $2,800,000 for service charge. The mathematics you can do. You've got plenty of time to do this. But what we say in the second part, the people at 2600 residential homeowners, what do they fight to? And then just go to 10, just mathematics is simple. 2600 times $504.96 a year translates what that is. But the key issue here is 5,700 under 100 cubic meters of water. This doesn't translate just for the homeowners, the small businessman that uses that 10 cubic centimeters of water. Let's go to the next slide and see what that shows up. For council or members of the committee, whatever we have, you can just translate the previous numbers and say, what does 100 cubic centimeter customer per ear, what's he pay for water? $6.94. Go up the scale. What's that poor lady that uses 10 cubic centimeters of water? Oh, hell, she only pays $52.39 a cubic meter. What's the high user pay? Try $1.91 per cubic meter. That's fair and equitable. Next slide, please.
Yes, Counselor Iannoni?
Now, let's just take a quick look at 10 years since this budget, since we introduced this new rate structure. What's it say? The residential homeowners, and we're not talking about people in duplex, we're just talking about that group, the residential homeowners. What did they contribute to the service charge? $93 million. What did the rest of the, and a lot of them are still residential, which we talked about the duplex, et cetera, they contributed just about $30 million. That's fair and equitable. I don't know by whose standard. Next slide, please. First slide, or whatever you call this. Now, at the time of the, we're never going to, Stafford, to critique the report, on October 29, 2007, staff made this statement that the service and staff determines that the size of the meter is designed, it's designed according to demand, and it's designed to turn around and satisfy the customer. These statements, no engineer would turn around and, I happen to be a professional engineer who brought Washington and also the city, but that's an aside. That's, there's no credibility, and let's just go to the next slide, and we'll see. Now, what you have here is the six-inch meter customers, and this is sort of, we go back just to show consistency, and you can turn around and council can look at these numbers and relate to customers. It says the six-inch meter was designed according to demand. The 6,000 cubic meters a year? That's ludicrous. Now, look at the bottom line. What does it say? The six-inch meter was designed to turn around. A meter isn't designed for demand. A meter is designed to record data. In this particular case, cubic meters of water. Now, staff, I should make just this quick comment. The new Boys and Girls Lock brought forth a lot of data. They brought forth more data in my analysis in this past year than I got in the previous five. So, let's just, so now we have a scenario where, I'm just going to give a clear cut, a simple example, a six-inch meter, the highest users can turn around and record, and it is a test that we ran last August by selecting customers, over 1 million cubic meters a year. The low side on a meter, maybe you don't know this, but there's a compound meter, it records low and high. The low side on that meter, which is, they say, two-inch, we're just trying to verify that, used up to 45,000 cubic meters a month. In fact, last year, the low side recorded a higher reading than the high side. And the demand, we should tell you this, and this is a short study, the demand exceeded 3,000 cubic meters a day for this highest customer. And that was in a lower month, had we picked a higher month. Next slide, please. I don't know if I'm, next slide, please, sir. This shows what's happened in 10 years, simply this. The highest, the low user, his rate went up 118%. The high user, 44%. That is fair and equitable. You have all these research. Next slide, please. This shows you that, a little bit of why there's such confusion when they say you can't forecast. Well, if you take the highest users, they are sporadic. But it does tell you what can you get from this information. Well, take a look at 2005. It had a high point of usage. And what we had, I think it says 4,000, but I'm not sure on this particular slide. What's happened here was that you had in 2004, on June 10th, the new casino opened. So, it had a high, a sudden drop in the, in the usage. And then it fell off in 2006. What happened in 2006? Well, the older casino suffered, but also you had a shutdown, and these 260,000, 50,000 cubic meters were lost because you lost a big customer. That customer, we should call it, they call it, at that time, International Foods. So, if you move down, and then you have these little blips and lobs, you can see that in 2010, that the usage was 12,000, 12, 12,800,000, some odd thousand. That same thing happened in 2007. But that, I think you can pick this apart, and there's no problem in anybody contacting me if they want a little more detail of how these things happened. Next slide, please. Side or whatever. This shows you what happened in the first quarter since 2006. You'll take a look, and you'll see in the first quarter, the water purchased from the region stays at a consistent pattern, except you have this higher, just slightly higher usage because it's basically 3,400,000. Now, if you go down to the last one, take a look what's happened in the first three months of this year. You've had over 314,000 cubic meters. That, I am sure, is not, it says something significant, but it's not turned around and then put into the budget. And that's, as I said, that's why I would ask for deferral so that I can sit down with staff and go through some of these things because they have most of my data, the charts showing that, that you just saw, uses for the past five years. But this is significant because that is consistent, over 100 cubic meters each month. Says something. Next slide. Next. Now, we get to the budget. And I don't know if we want to carry on with this, but what we said is, let's keep things the same, service charges the same. And in that report, I don't see from my standpoint as a business, ex-businessman, a comparison of budget last year of actual versus budget. What we have is the service charge, which is identical. So, it serves no useful purpose saying it's identical and then put one beside the other. What's missing also is the water consumption calculations. There, not there. So, it's, so in staff, we discussed this briefly last Thursday at 2:30, we had a meeting. And I said, you must turn around and get that high side and the low side swing. You can't have somebody at 52 cubic meters. We talked about this lady in 2000. It's mentioned to me several times. And we said, you know, this little lady, she uses a little bit of water, she can't afford it. I think that little old lady, with this, that past 10 years, she lost her house because she couldn't afford the water rate. So, what I did was, I just quickly did a quick takeoff in saying, because it's recognized in the consult reported this. What he said was simply this, that in, prior to, before the new rate structure was introduced, he said, it is unjust to have 59% of the cost paid by the residential and only 41%. So, if you go back, that old thing that the clerk just commented on, don't put that in. If you take a look at that second part, it says that we were going to be more equitable with this new rate structure. But the mathematics is simple. They were reassuring council that what they said, they were going to make it more equitable. But that never happened. If you just took a look at the mathematics.
Mr. Belowski, you're, Mr. Belowski, you're well over 10 minutes now. Could you please wrap up?
I asked for this to her. I mean, I agreed with him so we could sit down and go through these things. What we have here is an option. I said, give council an option. You can't keep turning around and having the residential sector pay that 75% plus, and the rest pays 25%. It's not fair, and it's not equitable.
We're going to hear from Mr. Harrison when you're, when you're done, sir. We're going to hear from Mr. Harrison when you're done, sir.
Oh, okay. The next, well, listen, what we have here is the two, if you take the other option, you'll see that very quickly that this is something, as I said, we could have discussed earlier. see that, very quickly, that this is something, as I said, we kind of discussed earlier. I just want to say, present an option, move some costs, so it says, in the first case, you have very little increase, $2, $9 and change. Take an option, which is one I just picked at random, and I'm hoping Mr. Harrison can respond, but I just said, "For your information, you can't go on like this. You can't have somebody paying $52 a cubic meter and somebody else paying on, you can't have the highest user contributing a certain, his contribution to the $16 million budget of $21,000." I mean, that, it defies anything. And furthermore, that I said, we went from, that's what I said, you can't do something like this. 10 years of going that route, and now, and allowing me, you spent six years studying this and getting the final information last year, and say to him, "You've got 10 minutes." And that's exactly what happened last time. So thank you for the 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. I'd ask Mr. Harrison now, he has a PowerPoint presentation, actually. I think everyone has it in their handouts or in their package on the water and sewer rates. Mr. Harrison? Sorry, Counselor, I know you.
You know, that's a lot of numbers to absorb, particularly at 11:30 at night, but I just have a question. It somewhat makes sense, which I, the casino uses 900, 896,745 cubic meters, and they only pay $21,000 a year in service charges?
Exactly. And they only pay $1.91 last year.
$1.91 a cubic meter?
Correct. They use 15 percent more than one utility that is bringing away the cost.
Okay. If we're going to bring this down to simplicity, there are probably residents watching that haven't tuned us out yet, that are screaming at the TV screen. So can staff tell me, are those numbers correct? Because the little old lady who's lost her house, and people who are sitting in large houses using large amounts of water, want to understand why they're paying what they pay, and why the casino only pays that much? Because really, it sounds asinine.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the casino doesn't just pay $20,000. It pays almost $1.5 million in consumption charges. And our rate structure has been the same since the implementation of going to the residential meters, which is, which is that the full cost of the regional charges is reflected in the consumption charges, or the volumetric rate, and the full cost of the city's expense of operating our system, plus the capital investment, is reflected in the service charges. So when you talk about a charge per cubic meter, if you include the, obviously, the large meters have a larger fixed cost, but when you relate it to the cost per meter, it goes down. The casino, the largest, the 10 largest, we have approximately 10 accounts that utilize over 100,000 cubic meters. Their cost per cubic meter, Mr. Belowski, and I can't comment exactly on the numbers, but the trend is, is the right trend, is that the cost per cubic meter is lower for the large users. However, the gross cost, or the total cost, is greater. And there are a number of reasons, as we've outlined in the report, that our staff want to investigate before we go to a rate structure change. Although we did have Mr. Loudon's report back in 2007, there are some things, for instance, this year, we've had a reduction, or we have a lower, a higher water loss content. And what we're suspecting in the higher, higher sized meters is as they've aged, they have started to record less, because in conflict to what most people believe, when a meter is not working correctly, it usually registers on the low side, not on the high side, although there are examples that that's not the case. So what our staff is looking at is reviewing that, reviewing our billing arrangement and our meter reading arrangement, to ensure that we're capturing all of our water consumption in the billing. And then, we would put in front of counsel some sort of adjustment for counsel's consideration to see if you want to shift some of that capital cost from the fixed charges to the consumption charge. We're not, we, you know, both the Director of Midas School Works and myself have met with Mr. Belowski extensively. We appreciate the work that he's done in taking the time to provide this data in a manner that, I know that 10 minutes doesn't justify all, or doesn't signify all the work that he's done, but he certainly has provided the data. But there's a big question. At the regional level, they are pushing more fixed costs. At the regional levels, both Mr. Holman and myself have sat at meetings where the region has indicated that they are going to, they want to have a totally fixed cost system, meaning that their, the costs that they recoup are totally fixed. And you see that in the sewer rates right now. So effectively, we could defer it if you so choose, but we also believe that there are some operational issues that we need to address and move forward with before we get into a rate structure change. The other thing is, is that we would need to go to the public and ask for input. If you recall, part of the Loudon proposal was to get feedback, but certainly, if we are to move ahead with a rate structure review, or a change, we should be going back to the public as well.
Okay. Counselor, does that answer your questions?
No. The calls that we get from the residents will say to us, "We conserve our water, our consumption charge is X, and our service charge is always more than our consumption charge." I don't think I've had a call complaining about the water rates that isn't, my service charge is more than my consumption charge. So if we're using the analogy that the average resident who's consuming whatever, because I'm tired and there's a lot of numbers in my head now, whatever number of cubic meters a year is paying more for their service charge than their consumption charge, wouldn't one assume the casino would be doing the same? Because you said that they paid 1.5 million in consumption charges last year, then the resident at home who said, "My service charge is always more than my consumption charge, and I conserve," why is the casino's service charge not more than their consumption charge? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
And it says, "Counsel," I think, that made the decision back in 2001 on what our rate structure would be.
Okay. I am pretty sure in 2001, I did not anticipate that the residents would be funding the casino for water.
I don't know necessarily that they are, and perhaps I can get Mr. Harrison to speak. I think that the volumetric rates are all the same for everyone.
Okay, then can I say, I don't understand what Mr. Belowski's put forth, and either his numbers are correct or they're not. If his numbers are not correct, then I'd like staff to tell us that, because that's how I'm understanding it.
I think you can take the argument a couple ways. I mean, how much does it cost to service one pipe into one building, as opposed to, let's say, 20 kilometers of pipes to 300 homes in 10 different streets? I mean, what's the fixed cost of providing one pipe into one building, as opposed to that many kilometers of pipes? And I think that that's the way that staff view it, and that's why there's a difference in the fixed charge. But the volumetric rate is the same for the casino as it is for every resident in the city. And I don't know if Mr. Harrison wants to expand on that.
All of you people are not understanding.
The, Counselor Peter Angel, you're correct. The fixed charge, the fixed cost, we've always determined that the rate structure has always been that the fixed cost is fixed, meaning we have to get, collect all of that money, whether we sell a drop of water or not. The money that you commit in this budget for the capital works is fixed. We have to collect it, and that's been the analogy. The question here is, is really, should there be a shift from the service charges onto the consumption charge for some of the fixed charges? That's basically what the analogy is. The same discussion that was done with Mr. Loudon's report in 2007. And what we're saying at this present time is that there are some operational issues that we have to investigate, we have to fix before we go forward with any type of rate structure adjustment. It's not that they're, the calculations are incorrect, it's, the fixed charge is fixed. So if you use more water, your rate per cubic meter lowers. It's quite simple. And so, nothing else to add on that?
Yeah, and I think it's, I mean, I think it's a misnomer to say that the residents are subsidizing the casino especially. I mean, the city of Niagara Falls receives, I believe it's over $6 million of a payment in lieu of taxes from the casino, as well as a $3 million grant from the casino. And, I mean, we definitely don't put $9 million back into services in the casino. So it's definitely a misnomer.
Just, okay, but that's what he's telling us. So we're not-
No, I think what he's doing is he's crunching the numbers to take the total fixed charge that the casino pays, and to divide it by the number of cubic meters that they use, to come up with a number.
Mr. Harrison just said, "The more you use, the less you pay."
No.
Excuse me. No, I said, "On the fixed charge." So if you take the fixed charge, it's $21,000. If you, if you use $1 million, you divide the $21,000 by a million cubic meters.
That's right.
That's, that becomes your, that becomes your charge per cubic meter, the fixed charge per cubic meter. If you only used 100,000, it'd be 1/10 the cost, if you look at the fixed charge as part of your cubic meter. What we're saying is, is that the total cost that, and we keep talking about one particular rate payer, but one rate payer, the biggest rate payer that we have, pays the full cost, the whole dollar and 91 cents on the consumption side, per every cubic meter, plus it pays a fixed charge. You combine that together, they still are the biggest contributor to our fees. That's all we're saying.
Counselor, the fixed charge is the fixed charge. It doesn't change. So the more cubic meters of water you use, if you divide that into the fixed charge, then you get a lower per-unit cost. And that's the numbers that are being presented, taking the highest user and dividing it by the fixed cost. That fixed cost is the same, whether they use one cubic meter, or whether they use a million cubic meters. That fixed cost doesn't change.
I'd come on some of these.
Is there any other counselor that has any comments to Mr. Harrison? If not, I think Mr. Harrison has a presentation that we need to get on with.
Well, thank you very much. Maybe the clerk can get the presentation up quickly. Generally, we have, this, this report was going, this is, this presentation's accompanying the report that you received. There's three issues that we'd like to see tonight. We'd like to talk about the pending issues, which is the review of the region, the 2011 rate setting, on which, of course, Mr. Belowski has brought forward a number of points. And then, of course, we're going to move forward, because it's the 10th year of having the contract with the billing and meter reading at NPEI, and we think it'd be useful to have that reviewed. So at this moment, the regional, at the regional level, there, it seems like every year, Mr. Holman and I are brought to the region, and there's a different rate review structure going on, or some sort of other investigation. Last year, the region staff conducted a review, and they reconfirmed the existing account structure for 2011, meaning that the sewage charge would be a totally fixed charge, and the water charge would be 25 percent fixed and 75 percent variable. In 2011, though, the new counsel at the region has been, is under, is going to undertake a new review. This one is not really about rates, it's more of a service delivery review, and it's about talking about one utility model. And it's important that our counsel recognizes what is going on at the region, and that is this, on this issue. It has significant ramifications for the municipality, because the water and sewer staff are intermingled into our operations.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
If I could just go on to counsel about that point for a second, and to me, I think that that's the most important point that we're going to be dealing with tonight, is the fact that the region is conducting a new review in 2011, but the review is not focused on the rates, it's actually focused on the service delivery. And at the end of this meeting, what I'm hoping is that, is that counsel will pass a motion to invite the regional representatives, our regional representatives here at the council, to sit down with us, not to be presented to, but to sit down at our table and have a presentation made by our staff on how it's going to affect us. Because I can bet dimes to dollars that when this review comes out, it's going to say one thing. It's going to say that the region should be the single-tier utility for water and wastewater. And personally, I don't think that it's in the best interest of our residents or our businesses if we pass this service up to the region. I think that the review is just a springboard to the end, and there's no doubt that it's going to say that the, that the region should take over water and wastewater. Bigger government is not always better government, in my opinion. And personally, I would like to see the city explore the option of taking over our own water and wastewater. We have the facilities here in Niagara Falls, we have the water treatment facility in Chippewa, and we have our wastewater plant over by our service center on Stanley Avenue. So as Mr. Harrison continues on with his presentation, I think it's going to become clear to counsel that if we do move to a single-tier utility model, that it wouldn't be in the best interest of us. Thanks, Mr. Harrison.
Okay. Moving to the next slide, we can see that one of the other pending issues, as Mr. Belowski points out, the, coming out of the Loudon report in 2007, we were, we have been looking at a different rate structure. However, it's been identified that there's some operational issues that we need to resolve. As I said, we've experienced a higher water loss in 2010. Now, water loss is when you, and we'll get more into it when we talk about the consumption rates, but basically, it's tied with the meters, the meter readings, the readings that we're getting off the meters, and the age of the high-volume meters. We did have something positive this year. We did experience an increase in the amount of water that we sold. We also increased the amount of water that we purchased. In Mr. Belowski's slide, he had shown what the first quarter sales of the water is at the region. I don't have those numbers quite yet. I haven't received the bill from the region yet, nor have I, so I'm not sure where that come from. But the other issue, as I talked about, is a regional issue, and then also the metering. So until all of these, all these points are concluded, we're not recommending that we move forward with a rate structure change. We also want to go through our zero-based budgeting approach, which would ensure what our operating costs are. The other thing that is, that is currently, and this is a result of some of the reviews that we've done, we've identified that within the, within the fixed charges, we have large volume water going through relatively small meters, and there has to be some consistency with the size of the meter and the volumes, or else we would change the structure of the fixed charge to more of a volumetric rate. Moving forward, the utility budget consists of two budgets, the sewer budget and the water budget, both are separate and independent. From the water perspective, there's provincial legislation that requires us to have a water budget that's separate and distinct. The charges on both systems have to come strictly from the rates and fees that you provide. There's rate security in providing a fixed charge, as opposed to a consumption charge and based on variability. That's not the chart.
No.
So as we move along, we can see that the way this budget's been presented, and you do have the information in the report that shows you that the net water expenditures on the fixed side are projected to grow by less than 1%. On the sewer side, it's less than 1%, so the total fixed charge is at- On the sewer side, it's less than 1%, so the total fixed charge is at $16.2 million, which is less than 1%. We're recommending, as I said, that the rates would stay the same. Now, the rate, the, the cost has increased marginally by less than 1%. As I said, the, the monthly charge on, on a residential meter would remain at $42.08. Some of the things that are driving the water expenditure, I know it's getting late, but there's some, both on both sides of this, the sewer, the capital charges are included in those, those expenses. We have inflationary charges of fuel insurance. We are able to maintain the RAP program on the sewer side, and we have started to implement the water conservation program for low-flow toilets and, and the rain barrel program. One thing on the sewer side should be recognized is that the full cost of the Garner-Grassybrook Pumping Station is included as an expense, and then the offset is the inclusion of the revenues from the DC reserve funds. So when we talk about the volumetric rate, we, again, we talk about being 25% fixed and 75% variable from the region. The vari, the volumetric rate has traditionally always been to capture the full cost of, of the, of the regional charges. We've built in the last couple of years a stabilization reserve, so that we can, we can collect some reserves, in the, in the sense that if there is, if there is a flow problem, we can use the reserves to offset that. During 2010, we did, because of the, the change in the water loss, we did experience a loss, which we were able to use the reserves to offset. The next chart talks about the volumetric from the sewer side. The fixed, the regional charges is based on a three-year average flow, which is based on budget. It's not based on actual flows. At the region, they've identified that there has been a shortfall, or, we, we, as the city, because of being based on, on budget, three-year average flows, because we've had a reduction in the actual flows, we have not seen the benefit of that. We've actually paid the budgeted cost and not the reduction. In 2011, they've lowered it, they've lowered the fixed charge from 11.9 to 11.7, so there is a slight offset. However, that's not reflective of their, of the reductions that we've seen over the last three years. There was a council report, we did provide that information in the, in the package. There are, it's at the regional level to decide what they're going to do with that overpayment.
Mr. Harrison?
Yeah.
If I could for a second, the volumetric rates that the region has, do they include a portion of their volumetric rates as capital? Do they use a portion of their volumetric rate for capital?
Uh, yeah.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay. So they incorporate capital costs and the volumetric rate that we pay?
Uh, yeah. The full cost, 100% of their sewer system, wastewater system, is captured in a fixed charge. And that fixed charge is just an annual levy. It's 11.7. There's no variability to us, other than, next year, the, the flows would be averaged again. Our proportion, excuse me, our proportional share of the, of the total cost, I believe the cost in the budget is approximately $60 million on the waste management side. We would pick up our proportionate share of that, based on the three-year average flows. That includes both their operating costs, their debt and the venture cost, and also their capital program.
So with Niagara Falls being such a high user, because of the amount of business that we have here, it's safe to say that the businesses here are funding capital projects in other municipalities in the region?
The larger centers, because they have the larger percentage of, of customers in the regional, in the regional program, would, would in essence fund, would fund the other, the other utility models across the region. We can't identify that directly, but certainly, it would be something that any type of rate study or utility model study should, should, should bring out to the forefront.
Okay. Can I just talk about the three-year average flows not being the actuals?
Sure.
And I know you said that there was a, an overpayment that's been made to the region. Staff have an estimate of how much that overpayment is?
Based over the last couple of years, it'd be about $1.7 million. The 2010 numbers are being finalized, but again, it would be about half of that as well. So, the, the city has, has paid, some of the municipalities have paid. We've seen our flows go down, and we haven't seen the benefit of that. That was a change in the way the rate structures were done approximately three, four years ago.
So our users should be looking at getting a rebate of about $2.5 million?
I, I don't think that regional council has made that decision. I think regional council has said that that's, that the system that was in place was that it was based on fixed charges, based on a three-year average, and, and that they were sending it back to their staff to investigate what they would do. But there's been no direction that I'm aware of that the, all the lower-tier municipalities would be getting any rebate.
Well, they can't expect that we're gonna overpay $2.5 million and then not give us the credit for that?
The rebate, that's the system that they had. I mean, the, the, the system that was in place changed, as I said, in 2007. Moving forward, some of the municipalities were having a difficult time predicting flow because of, of, of rain and various other conditions, and they weren't able to identify what the flows were. At the time, there was a, a, a study done to offset, to investigate, and it was gone that, it was chosen that they would go to a three-year average, based on fixed charges, on a fixed amount.
Would staff agree that we need to tell them that we want that money back?
If we were able to get that money back, we certainly would be able to reinvest it into our capital program, which, again, would benefit the, the reduction in wastewater flows. As I, as I, as it shows in the report, the wastewater flows have gone down significantly, almost 26% since 2005. And during that period of time, we've had both rainy, rainy weather, really wet summers, and then we've had dry, drier summers as well. So, it seems to be that the council's decision to fund sewer separation and other capital works has had a benefit on the, on the flows.
Or, as we did the last time, that the region made an error, I guess, in, in, in charging the city of Niagara Falls. We gave all rate payers a holiday from paying their bill.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, the issue isn't that there was an error made, this was the system that was in place.
No, I understand.
But again, I guess it would also be council's decision to do, if we, if we were to get a rebate, we'd have to see what council's decision was.
And it would only be on the sewer rates?
Yes.
And how long would $2.5 million be a holiday for our users for?
Approximately two and a half months.
So there'd be two and a half months of no sewer bills in Niagara Falls, should we receive that rebate?
Well, that would have to be chosen by council.
Okay. I, I think that's a good reason to say to council that we need to have our regional representatives here to discuss this. And I'd like them to be at the table with us and get a report back from staff on this issue, because I think it's a big enough issue that we need staff to be commenting, they need to be on our side, and we need to tell the region that we need to get this money back. Counsel Marocco?
So Vic, are you looking for a motion for us to do that now, or if we can? Because I think we can go on and on, but I think what you're saying is that we really need to have our regional reps here to go over this with us. And I think we can go over and it'd be a double whammy again, but, and I'm okay to continue on, but if there's the need for a motion, I'm, I'm willing to put that forward.
There's a, yeah, and there's a couple of issues. Obviously, the, the rebate to the users of Niagara Falls is one issue. But then, the idea of a single-tier utility is something that, that I don't, I really don't wanna go down that road. I, I think that there's been services that we've passed up to the region before, and we've received promises of efficiencies or, or, I guess, control on costs. And, and quite honestly, I don't wanna go down that road again. I don't, I don't wanna pass another service onto them. I'd rather take care of it ourselves if we can.
Is that also another motion that you're looking to, or we'll look at that after we meet with regional representatives?
Yeah, I think that's something that we need to convey to the regional representatives, and that's something that staff need to report back to all the council on, in a report. So.
Okay, so, can I make the motion?
Absolutely. Sure.
Appropriate? I'd like to make the motion then, to support Vic's recommendation.
Okay. Counsel Gates?
I'll say it.
Oh, okay. Sure. All right. There is a motion on the floor, then, that we invite the regional reps here to discuss the issues, I guess pertaining to water and wastewater. Want a report from staff can come back to council. All those in favor? Both motions carried unanimously. Thank you. I'll let Mr. Harrison continue on.
So moving on, the next chart summarizes the impact of the proposed rate increases. You can see that, as I indicated at the beginning, there are some adjustments that need to be made. The, on the water side, we're seeing that the, the rate increase at the regional level is, and, and the lower, as, the use of the, we're estimating a 20% water loss, which is higher than what we budgeted last year. We had used 18.5%. So you can see that, that there's, on the water side, we need to raise our water cubic meter rate by 5.5%. On the sewer side, we're seeing a reduction of 2%, so it comes out to a net of 1.4%. Moving, moving to the next chart, we can see what the average, and this, this was produced earlier. You can see that as the impact on the average user by the quantities, if you compare the same-sized meter, it, it has an impact. The $2 on the average residential property owner, it's $2 if they use 100 cubic meters. If you, if you recall, that, the fixed charge in 2000 was just under $600. So if you're a low user in 2000, and you're a low user of 100 cubic meters in 2011, with all of the rate increases, your, your, your charge has gone up to 696 from approximately, I think it was $595 for the year. You can see where it's, if you have a higher quantity of water, 360 cubic meters, it's approximately $9.33. Again, both of the rate increases that we're talking about is less than 1%. A commercial user that uses 5,000 cubic meters but has a six-inch meter, will see about, again, less than 1%. And then the largest user, that's just rounded off at 800,000 cubic meters, would see 1.34, which is less than the overall 1.4% rate increase. So, again, to summarize, and I know it's late, there's a regional review underway, and I think Counsel Peter Angelo has, has captured some of the important points. The, the city is committed to improving the water loss. We have started a program where we're going to be investigating, replacing, and looking at our large-volume water meters. The sewage flows have, are down, that's a positive impact. However, the full, the full benefit of that reduction is not reflected in our pricing model with the region. And, right now, we're looking at a one, less than 1% increase on the majority of the users. We are committed, again, as we've indicated, we are committed to a, a rate structure review, but after we, we fully investigate some of the other operational issues. So, that's my presentation.
Thanks, Mr. Harrison. Did you want to at all address the report that we have, municipal utility budget, F2011-12?
Well, the report indicates there's three recommendations. The first recommendation is to approve the rate structure that we were asking for. The second, the second one is to authorize for us to report back to your review and report on the impact of the smart metering program at NPEI, and also to do like a review of our, it's been 10 years that NPI has done the, the billing and, and metering reading for us, and we are looking at. And then, the third one is to, once, once these issues at the region, and we've done our operational review, we'll, we'll finalize and, and put forth a new rate, rate structure for council to, to, to address some of the concerns that Mr. Belowski and some of the counselors have raised.
Okay. So recommendation number two will mean that I'll finally not, I finally won't be getting two bills from NPEI. I should just be getting two bills, but in one envelope?
Well, we'll certainly talk to them. Some of the, some of the issues are for, some of the accounts are that they, they, some of the hydro bills are, are with a regulator, are with a, a service provider, and as a result, the bills are split. Some of the others, it's something that we've been trying to work on with our, our service contract.
We should also investigate online billing. Sorry, Mr. Yep, Mr.?
And I, I just wanna take a second, because I don't want anybody to go away here confused. I wanna try to simplify the numbers, and Mr. Harrison did a great job on presenting the overall budget. And thank you to Mr. Belowski, who has met quite often with our staff. But, just to put in perspective, pardon with Mr. Belowski's name, and just perhaps for Counsel, Counsel Hyononi. If we, if we did not turn on any, any tap at all in the city, it, it costs us about $16 million a year just to fund our infrastructure and maintain our water system, okay? So, when you look at what Mr. Belowski's saying is that the residential property owner uses about 43% of the water usage, but they pay about 75% of the cost of maintaining the system. And Mr. Belowski's saying that's inequitable. We have to look at that over the next couple of years, but that's the point Mr. Belowski's making. We're not saying, we're not saying he's wrong, we're just saying we need to look at that. Now, I, I don't want the press reporting this tomorrow that the homeowner is subsidizing on the, 'cause if you put it in perspective, Mr. Harrison's told you that the service charge is about $42.08 per month on a residential, that's about $505 a year that you and I pay for the service portion of that bill. The casino's paying $21,000. So, there, there is a difference. It's just that the global amount of residential users are paying about 12 million of the 16 million in terms of the service charge, simply because there's a lot more residential properties than there are large commercial property. So I, I don't wanna leave the misconception somehow, it is in proportionate in terms of the proportion of water usage to the percentage that the fixed system is using. But the homeowner, that fixed charge per homeowner is about $505. So I didn't want that $21,000 to get put out of proportion, but that's what it is. Every homeowner pays about $505 a year. The casino and the large users are paying about, they're the largest, so they're paying $21,000 on that service, just the service portion. Okay, so I hope that clarified it, because I didn't want it to go away and look like, okay? So, anyway. That's all I have.
Counsel Carrio, please.
Then I have a question. In your opinion, is it fair for the amount of pipes and everything that we have, is the system we have for that part of it fair? Or should we revert to the system of taxation, or we stick it to the commercial people in the industry, like we do in everything else?
Well, and again, you can go two different ways here. You can go completely consumption, or you can go, what the region wants us to do is go completely fixed. I think what Mr. Belowski's saying is, he believes right now there's inequity. I think, well, we've got, we've got some work to do on our side of it, to have a look at it. And these are some discussions we'll have to have, as Mr. Harrison said, as we go forward, looking at this, it's more of a zero-based budgeting approach, making sure that our fixed costs in the first place are right. Do we have the right staffing levels? Do we have the right infrastructure? And get that cost right before we start talking about modeling? I'm not saying Mr. Belowski's wrong, he's done a lot of hard work on this, but what we're saying is that we're not ready to make that jump yet. But, you know, when you look at the average fixed cost for residential unit being about $500,000 a year, you know, $500 a year, some may argue that's fairly reasonable in terms of the service you're getting. Is it, is it totally equitable? Some would argue maybe it's not, and that's something we have to look at as we go forward.
Counsel Marocco, please. No? Me or Do Adadi?
Yeah, I think, actually, thank you for that explanation. And I'd say, actually, Counsel Peter Angelo's was excellent, too, when he explained it, it made a lot of sense. He certainly has a grasp of it. I would move the report.
Okay. Do I have a second there to the municipal utility budget, seconded by Counsel Gates and Counsel Maves? Any questions or comments to the report? Now I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? None or opposed? Thank you. None are opposed, thank you. Mr. Harrison, is it important that you do the capital budget? I don't think so, Ray.
Counsel Peter Angelo, it's just an overview of what we're doing. Just quickly, we'll be coming out with the capital budget book on May 16th, and we'll be dealing with it at the next council meeting.
I'll pass it back over to Mayor DiO'daddy.
Thank you very much, Counsel Peter Angelo. I guess we have ratification of committee of the whole. Counsel Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the committee of the whole. The committee of the whole minutes of April 4th be approved under report CD 2011-05, the BIA guidelines, that the committee direct counsel to endorse the guidelines that have been distributed to boards of the city's business improvement areas, and to endorse petitioning the province for clarification on the BIA section of the municipal act regarding associated companies casting multiple votes at a BIA general meeting, and direct the downtown BIA to hold another general membership meeting, and approve the Lundys Lane BIA budget and the board of directors that submitted with the new board taking power after the decision of the 14th board member, and that direct staff to work with the Falls U BIA to implement changes to their constitution, approved at the recent general membership meeting.
Yes, sir.
Under MW 2011-08, the downtown revitalization project, Phase Two streetscape, Queen Street, St. Lawrence Avenue to Erie Avenue, tender results at the contract be loaded to the lowest bidder- awarded to the lowest bidder, I can't speak either now, to the lowest bidder. A1 asphalt maintenance limited at the tendered price of $989,819.53, and that the mayor and the city council be authorized to execute the necessary contract documents, and I still move. Given up.
Moved by Counsel Ianone, seconded by Counsel Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, and?
Noted or conflict.
And noted or conflict. We now have the results from the citizen appointments, and the clerk will give us those results.
I'll go very quickly, so listen closely. Municipal Heritage Committee, this is in no order of the actual tally, but the six for that are Gary Burke, Caitlin Kane, Laurel Campbell, John Garrett, Margaret Mingle, and Naveen Shahani. For Niagara District Airport Commission, Ernie Amadio and Rudy Suter. For the Committee of Adjustment, Chuck Antonio, Mark Cahill, Jack Collinson, Guy Prata, Lou Stranges. For the Property Standards Committee, John Anstruther, Sam LaRosa, Anna Lee, and Rudy Muscarin. For the Niagara Falls Museum- Niagara Falls Museum's Advisory Board, Margaret Dundino Fazio, John Harkness, Donald Jackson, Margaret Mingle, Carrie Painter, and Gordon West. For the Fence Viewers, Jake Hebert, Rudy Muscarin, and Jeanette Tussany. For the Recreation Committee and the Park in the City Committee, we actually have a tie for last, so we're suggesting you appoint 13. So for the Recreation Committee, it's basically everybody on the list with the exception of two, so it's John Archibald, Dan Cummings, Enzo DiLamarcia, Kevin Green, Paisley Janvary Pool, Gary Kraus, Nicolina Maruca, Rich Merlino, Delfina, Peter Angelo, Laurie Primo, Vito Scaringe, Mick Wolf, and Tommy Anello. For Park in the City, it's Tommy Anello, John Anstruther, Brianna, Antonio, Corey Berkman, Clark Bidder, Dean Crookshank, Frank Fort, Audrey Fraser, Janet Hassel, Paisley Janvary Pool, Elizabeth Manker, Pat Muscarin, and Vena Shahani. And for the Niagara Falls Library Board, it's Carmen Dix, Nancy Ite Reynolds, Dean Fazio, Shirley Fisher, Barbara Ness, Eric Sheridan, Dr. Ken Smith, and Damian Frank Franz. So if you can just make a motion approving those appointments.
We have a motion, Counsel Maves, seconded by Counsel Cariel. All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. And lastly, the bylaws, kind of a motion to choose the bylaws. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Cariel. All those in favor? Okay? We're just doing the bylaws still. Are we?
No, I just wanted to express my opposition to PD 2011-24. That's the property on Temperance Street, which is going to house 17 mentally ill people, which has no yard whatsoever, has no amenities inside, and that's going to come back to haunt you. Okay, that- you're talking about?
I'm opposed to that also.
That was the consent agenda you were talking about? Okay.
There's a bylaw as well that that relates to. It's bylaw 2011-48. I'm opposed to the consent agenda item, I'm opposed to the bylaw, and I'm also opposed to bylaw 2011-51, the bylaw to prohibit smoking of tobacco on man's or buildings owned by the city of Niagara Falls. Obviously, buildings, I don't have a problem with, but the lands, I do.
Okay. You get that? Yes, Counsel Morocco?
And please note that PD 2011-23, I have a conflict. Sorry, wasn't in the room.
Okay, so we got that one? Okay, Counsel Thompson?
Yes, I wonder if we could have a report back. I've had several requests with respect to the smoking of municipal property. Could affect the convention, new convention facility, and they feel that that would have a real negative impact if that were enforced there, so could we have a report back on that at the next meeting?
Okay, well, do you want to do it under new business, then? We can do that as soon as we do the bylaws, then? Just run through these real quick. We just- we've got the first motion, first reading done, all those in favor? Oh, you have to- yeah, all those in favor?
Okay, with the exception of the- the negative votes indicated, bylaws 2011-47 to 2011-54 read a first time.
Second and third by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Cariel. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-47 to 2011-54 read a second and third time and passed.
Okay, and Counsel Thompson made a motion that we get a report back on the effect of smoking, no smoking outside of the convention center, seconded by Counsel Wang.
Well, yeah, I would add to it.
Okay.
Maybe get another.
Okay, Counsel Ianone, seconded, and then Counsel Wang.
I have absolutely no problem with what's being suggested, but I think we just need to broaden the report to include the effect on local residents who want to watch their children play baseball, or they're, you know, are forced to leave their kids at McBain Center Playground and walk out to the road. You know, it's like, let's not just worry about the effect on the convention center, but let's worry about the effect on families within the community as well, so if we could look at the impacts that we failed to look at before, all of them, that would make me very happy.
The mover and seconder? No? Okay.
No, we didn't fail to look at them. We had a full debate in this council chamber. I thought that we debated it quite well. Everybody stated their opinion, and so I'm not...
Okay, Counsel Morocco?
And your worship, we said there was no exception, so I'm sorry, I can't support the report on taking one individual building and setting it aside, for an example. There's no smoking, there's no smoking, it's a city property.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, you're- the motion?
What's the motion?
The motion is to ask staff to come back with a report on the effects of a no-smoking policy at the convention center. Yeah, Counsel Maves?
No, I think, I said when we passed this, that I think we should take some more time with this, because I think there are some other buildings possibly in the city and some other jurisdictions that maybe we should take a closer look at. I'd rather see staff study it, and maybe, as I say, in some of these outdoor places like Oaks Park, maybe Grandma and Grandpa have been spoken for 60 years and watched their grandson. And designated area down on the corner or something, but I don't think- I think it's just too tight, it's totally restricted. I'm not- I am- I don't want people to smoke either, but some people, it's an addiction, and I think they should be allowed in certain areas, and I don't think it should just be the convention center. So I would just assume that we have staff look at that and some other areas in the city that- and I can see convention center where you've got 1,000 cars in the parking lot, and some guy lights up there. I mean, hello, I mean, I can't see a standing policeman running around giving out tickets. So I think that should be, take a closer look at it. So I'm- I'm opposed to just the one building. I'd like to see it in- in some other areas, like to see the staff look at it and come back with other recommendations.
Okay, so...
No, no, I'm not seconded, it's if we're going back over.
Okay, why don't we do two separate motions, then? We could do one for the convention center and one for...
I'll second Wang's. If Counselor Thompson is willing to broaden it to include all city properties, then I'll be hap- very, very happy to second his motion.
Okay, so is that the motion, then? You're gonna open it up to all public municipal buildings?
We just did.
We thought we did all of that.
I have a question on the convention.
Okay, so we're gonna go with the initial one. If we want to make a separate motion, we will. So this is just for the convention center, for a report to come back. All those in favor? Okay, and opposed? Okay, so that's passed. Counsel Wang.
Now I would like to make the same motion, but to all properties affected by the bylaw that's passed tonight, so all the other municipal properties in addition to the convention center.
Okay, do we...
I have a question, too. Don't we have to reverse our- we made that motion. Doesn't someone have to break that up? A motion for reconsideration? Because we already passed that.
That's a good point.
Well, I mean, I don't understand the motion to begin with, because you've just passed the bylaw, which is basically implementing the decision. So you either vote against the bylaw, or you don't vote against the bylaw, and Counsel Wang obviously indicated her opposition to the bylaw, but I don't really see what served in referring it to staff for a report. You already had that report.
Okay, so...
The reason I'm asking for a report was it was passed hastily without looking at all the possible implications. There were a lot of people who contacted me upset about what was done, and it just, I think, warrants a review.
Okay, so Counsel Wang is making the motion that we look at all the city facilities. Have a- yes, the clerk is gonna weigh in again.
I would suggest that Counsel Wang sort of made a suggestion in there, why don't you review it after six months?
That's fair. Four years, or four years.
Three months.
Use that as your next campaign policy.
Okay, so are you gonna for now withdraw that motion, or are you gonna try to get a second?
I'd like a second.
Okay, so the motion, you heard it, it's to have a review of municipal buildings and our outdoor no-smoking policy. Is there a seconder to the motion? Yes, Counsel?
Review or a report?
A report back from staff.
Three months review.
Would the clerk like to jump in?
Yeah, I would suggest you ask for a review of the effectiveness of the bylaw. I think three months isn't realistic, Counsel Wang, for a couple of reasons. Mr. Beaman, for example, still will have to get the short-form wording for any ticketing. I think to really have a thorough review, you've at least got to have the ticketing in place. That might take a couple of months. I think six months is more realistic.
Okay, six months? Okay, seconded by Counsel Maves. Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Worship. This is for a review of what we've already passed?
I think so, yeah.
No.
I'm suggesting it would just be a review of how is the bylaw working? Like we do, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, yes.
In six months?
Yeah, that's a report on how it's doing.
A report of the review, a review of the report. In six months? Okay, you heard the motion. All those in favor? One, two, three, all hands up again, sorry. Were you up or down?
I was up.
Is it still up?
I spoke, I guess.
Okay, I get- let's call it again. All those in favor of the review?
After six.
Hands up, after six months. Okay, opposed? Okay, it's defeated. Any new business? Counsel Morocco?
Your worship, I just want to bring forward that I was supposed to probably bring this up at the last meeting. I was talking to Dean about having representation at FCM, and he said it should be brought up to council to have the support. I think it's actually, Carolyn did attend, and I asked her, and she wasn't interested in attending this year. So I would be interesting- interested, sorry, can't even talk either, in attending, since we are booking a conference for 2014.
Yep.
And I think that it's important that the city shows their support.
I'm gonna be there.
Okay.
As well.
Okay.
This year, and then in 2013, to get the flag, to bring it to Niagara Falls.
Yeah, because I think that we have to have some participation. Actually, there is a, I think, some commitments that the city has to do prior, the year prior to the conference as well, so if I could do...
I'd make that motion, she can go. I mean, I don't think any of us should not attend.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a seconder that Counsel Morocco attend FCM this year. Any discussion?
Where is it?
It's in Halifax. It's in June. All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. We all got an email about the toilet retrofit program from, I guess, a gentleman who manages a condominium corporation. And I guess in the email, it was saying that condo owners were excluded from the toilet retrofit program. Personally, I can't remember if I replied just to him, or if I replied to all. I don't think it should be part of our policy that we exclude people just because they own a condo. I think if they pay taxes in Niagara Falls, then they should be eligible for the rebate. So, I mean, I'd like to make a motion, your worship, that we make an amendment to that and that we include condos.
A second.
Okay, moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Ianone. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Is there any other new business? Motion for adjournment, seconded by Counsel Maves. All those in favor? All right, thank you.